Ready to go.
Okay, we're back on the record. We are continuing discussion on calendar number 5914BZ, 114122 Jackson Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, could we have the first speaker in opposition, please? And if you wouldn't mind, please get in line so that we don't have to wait for you to figure out how to get out of the row. And you're limited to three minutes. There will be a buzzer. It means -- the buzzer means you have another 10 seconds to wrap up, okay?
Okay.
Please.
Yeah.
That's what we're gonna do. So please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes. I'm sorry, Caroline.
No, no, no. They just -- they --
Some of them did sign in.
Yeah.
I could sign them in.
And state your name.
Some of them I could sign in. It's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Who states your name for the record and you'll have three minutes?
I'm Scott Sarada. I live at 351 Manhattan Avenue.
Or have you?
I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of 351 Manhattan Avenue. The applicant has not established any programmatic need in the community nor legitimate need to tear down this historic building and build a towering gymatorium above our quiet residential neighborhood. Only a "anticipated" programmatic relationship, according to page two of their response. No schools nor the DOE have signed any formal commitment with the SSA. We believe that it's irresponsible to tear down a building from 1901 to serve "anticipated" programmatic relationships which are currently nonexistent. Plus, the SSA is not an educational institution. The SSA also claims that "there is no gymnasium available for public elementary and middle schools that offers routine recreational opportunities." Well, so we did our own independent research. We contacted all the schools in our district and here's what we found. We spoke with 13 schools in the immediate vicinity that are middle schools and we found out that every single school already has their own dedicated gymnasium, dedicated auditorium, and even their own science rooms. IS 586 has an auditorium that holds 600 people and two gymnasiums. PS 250's brand-new renovated auditorium holds 350 people. The regulation gymnasium holds 350 people. PS 110 has a brand-new library, dance studio, science lab, and fitness room just finished in 2015. PS 18 has a brand-new computer lab with 40 new iMac computers purchased in 2014. More than half of the schools have had complete renovations of their auditorium and gymnasiums within the last two years. But most importantly, the Williamsburg Community Center, built in 2003, which is six blocks away from PS 132, again, the only school they can demonstrate a casual relationship with, this is a 21,000-square-foot facility. It has a commercial kitchen, classrooms, an indoor full-court regulation-sized gymnasium, a basketball court, an outdoor basketball court, a weight room, dance studios, art studios, and performing arts stages, plus a computer lab. Every day, they host after-school programs from 3:00 to 6:00, and from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. every day. In the summer, the space closes at midnight on weekends. St. Nick's knows about this space because they took over all the programming for the whole building as of January 1st, 2014. The SSA claims that 120 Jackson Street is not a historic landmark and not a potential victim to gentrification. This is the oldest continually-operated settlement house in Brooklyn. Regardless of what the developers who are gentrifying our neighborhood may suggest, a building built in 1901 is historic. The building is both iconic and historic. In fact, the applicant even uses an image of the 1901 structure on their own letterhead in the words "since 1901" under the iconic illustration. The SSA points to the general growth of the area and population statistics, but they have not established nor substantiated any actual real need in the neighborhood. That's because there is no actual real need in the neighborhood. The need is just not there. We have all the facilities we need in the community. And there is also broad-based community objection to this unnecessary development. Again, we don't feel there's a need to demolish this historic structure and build an $18 million facility where it's clearly not needed. And I'll finish up. The gymatorium is not needed. The SSA is not an educational institution. We believe the applicant's request should be denied. And I'd be happy to submit a record of all of the schools that we called and exactly what we found to you.
Please do.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Constantine Trips and I live at 353 Manhattan Avenue. And I'm also speaking on behalf of the residents of 353. I just want the parents here to know that I teach at a public school in Bed-Stuy as part of the New York Charis Program, which is a volunteer program. I've been doing that for longer than a year now. So I'm really for the kids. Like, this is not an issue where it's against the kids or anything. It's about regulations and about zoning codes and protecting the neighborhood and stuff. So I don't understand why the SSA has not demonstrated that they're building the structure which complies to the regulation specifications and the needs of the School Construction Authority and the Department of Health and Department of Education. There seems to be no communication going on. I don't understand why. The same with the classroom. The SSA is saying that they're providing a facility for schools in the neighborhood, but they're only talking to one school in the neighborhood. There are way more schools that they can even, like, get a letter of recommendation or anything, which I think is something we should, I don't know, see or whatever. Also, they want to offer adult programs and programs for kids, but where is this all gonna take place? It seems like they tell you they have a flexible space, like 12 rooms or something, and high ceilings. And I don't understand. It's nice, you have 12 rooms, but they're gonna be tiny. If it's flexible space and you have put 12 rooms in this space, for example, it's gonna be tiny and very tall. And it doesn't make too much sense for me. I work with kids and they need a lot of space. I don't know. And there's -- yeah, and again, the ceiling height doesn't make a lot of sense to me. There's no need for 18-foot ceilings in office space, I think. Yeah. But I think you mentioned that already. And the SSA is saying that they're not building out a scale of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood, but that's not true. It's 77-foot tall. That's way, way taller than almost every single building in the neighborhood. So I think it's totally gonna change the character. Yeah. And I just wanna wrap up with saying that I'm opposed to this for all the reasons that I mentioned. And I'm all for the kids having a gym, but I think you should meet those rules and regulations first and provide proof that the neighborhood needs those facilities. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Kate York and I'm speaking in favor of this project. I don't know where to begin. I started thinking in one direction and then listening to this whole discussion, so many thoughts have come to mind. I was on the school leadership team. I've been at PS 132 with my children for nine years. I was in the school leadership team for four of those years. There were discussions at almost every meeting about school settlement and the hope that that brought to our school because we have programming for every single grade where they do performances with Tadaa at least once a year. Some of them do it twice a year. And when we do the presentations, the space that we have to do them in is so inadequate that you don't have proper sightlines. And it's really frustrating for everybody. Anytime there's testing where they have to pull out kids, it's done in the gym and then there's no gym for the other kids. So we've started having yoga in the classrooms. Our classrooms are at least 30 kids for the upper grades. So trying to do yoga in a classroom with at least 30 kids is absurd. It's just a ripple effect. Not having a space to actually present performances for a school that has made this commitment to performances is really frustrating. The gym is pitiful and pathetic. When we started to use settlement for a gym, that created all these other problems because of the condition of the space. So I didn't actually realize that there was opposition to this because it was such an obvious positive. I was also on the community education council in our district, so I'm very familiar with the schools. And the idea that all of our schools have what they need is laughable, especially PS 132, that is growing, it has a waiting list, it has programs, it's turning people away. And many of the things you've constantly seen when kids are evaluating, when parents are evaluating the school is the lack of facility. I think that the idea that this is out of character with the neighborhood is a joke. I would like to see those people opposing this come to the meetings where the huge condominium towers are discussed. And I would hope that they are broken apart into such careful discussion with all of you people as well because our neighborhood is changing and changing and changing and changing. And this is the one opportunity we have to have something fantastic happen for us. I also do programming. I've done programming in a lot of our local schools. And one thing I need is flexible space. I do hands-on work doing science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And in order to integrate those things, you actually need a lot of different variables. You need to have space. You need to have water. You need to have drying racks and all kinds of ways to manage the materials that you're using. This is why our schools are not offering this kind of programming. I know there will be use of this space because I will be there using it if I'm given the opportunity. And I know there will be people lining up at the door to make use of it. Our neighborhood is exploding. And this project needs to go through. We need to see this happen and I will celebrate the day when the ribbon is cut.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Maria Vanessa Scorsone and I'm in support of this project. I am on the PTA. I'm a board member of PS 132. So I'm in the school a lot. And I can tell you that it is busting at the seams. Right now, we have a makeshift performance space. That's what Kate was referring to as our gym. It's not really a gym. It's a room with a weird platform for a stage with about four giant columns in it. So any type of organized sports is completely out of the question. This space is also used for some of our remedial services, which is tutoring, physical education, speech therapy. And if there ever is a performance or if that space is being used for physical education, then these remedial services sometimes happen in the hallways because there is not a classroom available. The school is full. The PTA, we meet in the cafeteria because there is not a place for us to meet. The school is great. It's creative. It does what it can with its space, but we could really, really use more. The possibilities at school settlement are endless and wonderful. And the kids would really benefit from it. Not to mention that it would also double some of our after-school, which would benefit working parents, you know, everywhere. So please, please pass this. We really, really need this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Viridiana Deliberto. My son goes to PS 132 and we do not have a casual relationship. We are the community and we need the center. You need to pass it because we don't have a space. Like, our gym is a gym, is an auditorium, is everything. We use that space. Like, it's precious for us because that's the only space they have. It's all the way on the third floor of the school. So the little munchkins have to go all the way up and come all the way down. And then, like, it's just crazy. We just can't -- we meet, like, outside. We meet at the library, we meet at the coffee shop, we meet outside the school. We just stand there and we have our meetings there. And we don't have a space. And it is not true that we have a gym and then we have a, what did he say, a theater. That is not true. That space is everything for us. And we need this thing to get passed. Also, the rooms are going to be used. I'll be there, too. I'll be helping the community to learn English. I'll help the little ones to do homework. And for those who don't have parents that are there, I am there for them. You know, we -- our library is, it's true, it's very close, it's two blocks, but it's full. You cannot, like, walk in the library. You go in after school. There is no space. There are no enough chairs. There are just no enough books to borrow from the library. And that space will be, like, so wonderful to have. One more space that we can bring our kids and teach them and help them and then help them grow and be bright because, yeah, I don't understand the opposition. I mean, it's ridiculous. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Lorraine Scorsone and my family has been in Williamsburg for five generations. We saw the building go up. And the settlement house is not a place. It is not a building. It is the spirit and heartbeat of the community. And it has been so. And I'm a witness to that. My parents met. She was an Austrian Jew who met a Southern Italian. And they met at a dance held at the settlement house. This is what community is about. This is what New York is about and what America is about. We need this place because Williamsburg is gentrified beyond recognition. Many of the people who are moving in can afford the nursery schools and the jamborees. The settlement house provides services to people. We still have a fairly good balance, but the services, we're losing. The space, we're losing. More and more mom-and-pop shops are closing. There is no more expansion. Settlement House was given to the people for the people and it's got to serve the people in the community of the lower socioeconomic, especially. That is dying and it will continue to die. And I want to preserve the integrity of this immigrant neighborhood that I have witnessed and I have stories and I have photographs going back five generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeanette Ciara and I live at 658 Grand Street. I just wanted to say that PS 250 did not have their gymnasium renovated recently. My daughter just graduated last June of 2014. And while attending there, there were many a times that we did occupy the school settlement building for programs that weren't able to be held at PS 250. Yes, they do have an auditorium and a gymnasium, but there are also time-scheduled conflicts, whereas 250 didn't have to use school settlements premises along with PS 132. And it's just not, it's not just for the kids at the schools. It's for the community as well. I know there are programs that are held for adults and, you know, people that just reside around there. A new building would just better serve the children, the adults, and the seniors. And it's also good to have a place for teenagers and children to go to after school so that the parents feel comfortable knowing that they're in a safe environment under supervision. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. And the building, I believe, is gonna be handicap accessible, which is very important, so that our handicap residents can also have a place to attend. And while this current building has provided a lot for the children and our residents, we do need a new and improved community center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Is there any other speakers? Please come stand on the ramp so you can come up.
Hello, my name is Taylor Erkinen. I'm a local parent and business owner. I just wanted to note that recent residential improvements, recent residential developments within the neighborhood are out of scale but only serving luxury residential needs. This is a development that will serve low, moderating, and elderly individuals in the neighborhood who are vastly underserved. I do respect the historic nature of the structure, but it is impossible to preserve the building. So let's preserve the spirit of the settlement house and the efforts into the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this? Ms. Harris? You need a pen? Is that what's missing? The only comment, a couple of comments. We submitted a report from Jeff Weiner? Weiner? Jeff's last name Weiner? Weiner. That outlined what other resources, thank you, there are in the neighborhood. We looked at a half a mile and a mile. And the institutions that were identified by Mr. Sarada were included there. Most notably, the Williamsburg house that he mentioned is actually part of NYCHA and has limited access. Virtually all of the facilities that are listed in our report are either out of or are not sufficient to meet the need. The public school can't invade another public school during the school day and use their facilities. So, and a high school gym is not appropriate for elementary school kids. So that would also pose scheduling conflicts between them. All right, just to understand, the other settlement house that was referred to that's six blocks away from 132? That's part of NYCHA. That's in NYCHA. So it's only available for NYCHA? Predominantly for NYCHA. I think they have a 75 percent requirement for NYCHA. And it's not a, we identified that facility in our report. And it's not sufficient to meet the needs of the community. It doesn't meet the SSA's needs. It doesn't meet PS 132's needs. We do have letters from two additional schools that were submitted. We are not relying solely on PS 132 for support. We have very emphatic support from two other schools whose letters we put in. One is a middle school, one's an elementary school. And that's already in the record. The offices are not 18 feet high. I think Mr. Constantine wasn't as familiar with the dimensions of the building. The neighborhood's a changing neighborhood. There are some very tall buildings right across the street. There was a downzoning, there's no doubt, because the community wanted to preserve a lower height. When that downzoning took place, it was known to the community board that this project was on the horizon. And the community board, which had the greatest say in that rezoning, has voted unanimously in favor of this project notwithstanding its height. They believe that this is in character with the community. We've demonstrated that it would not be the only tall building and certainly not the tallest building in the immediate neighborhood. And we've submitted an analysis, a height analysis of buildings that's in the record as well. So that is a summary of response to the opposition. I'm moved by the words of the people supporting it and the history that comes along, five generations being in the community, and understanding that tearing down an old building that no longer serves the needs of the community in the way that they want, that you're able to actually work against gentrification to support the local population by tearing down the old building, building a new building that really meets their needs and the kids' needs, while preserving and perpetuating the services that were provided by that very venerable institution. If the building can't be torn down and rebuilt in the way that we're proposing, then SSA won't be able to meet its mission and it won't be able to serve the low and moderate-income groups that are in the neighborhood. So I understand I've got some homework to do. Since this is partially an educational institution? Yes. It's good I have homework to do. Yes. And I'd like to -- And that's also true of the home care program homework. And the home, home care program, yep. So we'll need a few weeks to make a submission. We, you know, SSA is a not-for-profit, not a wealthy not-for-profit, and this -- So you're doing this pro bono, right? Not quite. But it's a hardship on all of the, it's a hardship on them because of the staff time that's going to it. And we can't, we're not paying, you know, super-expensive consultants who can consult for the private schools who come before you. We're doing what we can within the limits of the budget that SSA has and the means that SSA has, the human resources. But a lot of this information, you actually have it. You just need to give it to us. And we'll give it to you. Yes. And then Ryan Singer will reach out to Department of Ed and see if we can get a little more clarity. We would greatly appreciate that. Okay. So really, because I'm sure there'll be a lot of material to read, if we can have the hearing on March 24th, does that work? And so we work backwards where your submission would be on March 10? Or actually, is that enough time? The submission date, the end date's fine, March 10th. I'm taking my first vacation in a long time. Oh, never? Well, you could feel free to submit on March 6th. It would be March, how do I change the date there? We could submit March 3rd. Okay. That's fine. Is that enough time? Is that enough time?
I have to talk to the program.
So how about this? When are you back from vacation? On the 8th. On the 8th. So what if you submitted March 18th? That would be fine. And then we had a hearing on the 31st instead? That's fine. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. And then opposition, because that's the way it goes. So because of that submission schedule. So you would submit on the 18th, then opposition gets? The 25th. One week? Submits on the 25th. You can respond to opposition if you want. We will forego. And if you, if you want to have a hearing the 31st, we would be -- Yeah, so then we forego that. Okay. And we will speak on the record if we have any more opposition, response to them. Yes. I understand that they submitted something in writing or tried to submit something in writing in the vein of opposition and then said that was gonna be their testimony. I'd like to know the status of that attempted submission and whether we are only to be responding to what was said today or to something that they submitted in writing. There were official submissions today, right? Yes?
Just one testimony.
Okay. But, so one person submitted in writing.
Just one testimony.
One testimony in writing. And what were those other ones? We had a stack of, wasn't that?
Oh, that's for this afternoon's cases.
Oh, that was only Mom? Okay. Oh, no. So it --
No.
Okay, different site. Okay, different site. Sorry. If there was something submitted today as testimony, in lieu of testimony, I'd like confirmation of what was submitted so that we would incorporate our response to that written submission in our next submission to you. Okay, so just speak to Josh. Okay, will do. Thank you. You've taken a lot of time with this case, I know, and great attention to the details. I appreciate it and sorry that you had to eat lunch at the desk table. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're gonna actually take a break. So, go ahead. It's about the next one? So we're actually gonna take a break because not everybody ate lunch at the desk. 20 minutes? What? Do we have something very short?
Well, no. We had a single-family home, two PCEs, and an HPD before the new cases.
20 minutes.
You guys are starving, those.
What'd you say?
You guys are starving.
Yeah, I think we should, you know, give us a break.
Okay. Take a break. We're bored. All right, we're gonna take a 20-minute break.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah.
Camera on?
Yes, camera's on. Okay, good afternoon. We're back on the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 10, 2015. We're back on the record. Continued hearing items, item number 18, 12214BZ, 1318 East 28th Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Louis Garfunkel.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay.
As I'd like to discuss the comments at yesterday's executive session. In response to the comments that I did not provide changes from the January 6th, per the January 6 hearings, I believe the attic, I think Commissioner Martin has pointed out at the end, is, was lowered in the rear from, you know, from the January 6 hearing, the, at the January 6 hearing, I had walls built in that attic, in that rear portion. And this submission today has no walls and I've lowered the ridge to match --
Right, you had walls that --
In the January 6 submission, in the rear portion of the attic, there were walls in that storage room, five or six feet high, you know, side walls. In this, in today's submission, the attic, at that point, the rafters go down and meet the second floor.
Do you have your drawings with you?
Yes.
Can you, like, point to what you're talking about?
Look at the rear elevation, A9. I don't have the drawing from January 6 in the submission. But I know the 3D I have, which I --
So, but it's always A9, so we should be in a comparing sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, the ridge --
No, no, no. Explain what you mean. I don't know what you mean.
Okay.
Point to what you're talking about. I see that the, in the rear --
And if you can see this --
Which is later.
The rafters come down to the point of the second floor on today's submission. But on January 6, which the page you're holding, actually, in the side elevation, you see the rear portion of the attic is about a five-foot-high wall there.
Okay.
If you want to run to that, you could jump to that elevation. That would be A10.
So wait, so, okay, so if we stay on A9, the rear elevation, the December submission, I don't know exactly what the date is, but all right.
Right.
December submission, you've got a second floor with the, I see, so the attic had a window in it. And now it squishes down till it has just a kind of little, a piece of the attic, anyway,
it has just a kind of little, a piece of the attic anyway that does that, right?
Well, there used to be a structure on the third floor, the peaked roof. Now there is only a structure up to the second floor and a peaked roof.
Correct.
Structure up to the second floor.
I don't see a window. Now there's no window.
There's no window on it.
No, that part I see. There used to, I see a structure on the third floor. It was really the third floor structure.
Yes.
But you still have a, you still have the high attic ridge.
I could, I could lower that ridge up. My thought was just to keep it the same height as the neighboring building and the existing building. That ridge could-
How is that, so on A9 again, so A9 of the January 21 submission, your ridge height, top of ridge of that portion that's set back is at 32 feet. And on December 19th, it was at 32 feet.
Today it's not 32 feet. Today's submission, well, the main, you're confusing the 32-foot height is the, on that elevation refers to the middle portion of the attic.
Dormer height.
Yeah, the dormer.
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for, the dormer.
That didn't change.
The top of the ridge of that structure is 32 feet, right?
Correct.
And it was, and it was 32 feet in December 19th.
Correct.
Right? And then the top of that little third-floor thing with the window that faces the rear.
Okay, that's what you mean, okay.
Yeah, that one was 30, right? And now it's, don't know. Now it's something else.
It's less, it's about 27, because you see the 30 mark is way up.
The 30 mark is higher.
It's higher.
So you dropped that peak down three feet then?
In addition to walls, there were walls in that rear room that was called a storage room.
Okay.
They're gone.
Okay.
So the height of the, you know, side of the building is significantly lower.
Okay, so then at the rear, you just, okay, so then instead of a wall, now it's the continuin, continuation of the slope of the roof.
Correct.
Okay. So then, but the dormer stays as is?
Yes.
Okay. So then if you look at, because, you know, before you had the rendering, which I know is a lot, because you do these hand renderings, I know that's really hard, takes a long time. But maybe what you could do, so I'm kind of trying to imagine-
It's kind of, the rendering, if you look at the rendering, where it shows the driveway side, you see in the rendering-
It's doing sort of like this.
You see in the rendering, a rear portion that has like a wall that's six feet high. So I just didn't want to-
Yeah, I see.
Redraw it because the rest was the same.
Right, okay, I'm getting that. So then, okay, I do see that that's a significant reduction in the bulk at the rear. So I guess the question that remains though is the effect of the dormer on a mass of the building. And in addition to which you have this 20-foot rear yard, where you've got that whole height on top of the 20-foot rear yard, right?
Right.
So what we had-
It's just that the, you know, the homeowner has six children and we're not, we're not looking to renovate the house. I can't move the kitchen over. So it's, you've got to build that way and he'll lose the bedrooms in the back and just, it's a narrow, it's a narrow lot, it's a narrow house that's 13 feet. Unusual that to have it in this area. Most houses are 40 by 100, 30 by 100 lots, so.
What'd you say, it's, what's 13 feet?
The house, the structure itself is 13 feet wide.
Okay.
Very narrow, you know, it's hard to work with.
Okay. All right. Just wondering if there's anything you can do about the height of the dormer? Like if you, what's the section through the dormer as you're close to the street? What's the-
Oh, it's on 1A12 it should be.
Do you have to put a peaked roof on the dormer or could that be a flat?
If the board requests, I could make it flat.
No, 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 I mean in terms of headroom.
No, because the-
It looks like you've got eight foot-
It's eight foot two, but the sides are a little lower, so.
Oh, it is lower.
So if I-
I'm wondering, I don't know how much of this is structural or just because, you know, the way the drawing is, is just black lines, it's not really telling you how to put it, how to put it together. Is there any way to just kind of drop that down a little bit more so it springs from the peak instead of, from the peak of the double Y, the double house, instead of from higher than the peak? I don't know.
That was a struggle the whole time.
I don't know, right.
It wouldn't be a livable space.
It's hard to see where, oh, because the peak is all the way down there, you know.
Also, I'd have a water, water issue, rainwater issue.
Okay. Can you just look at seeing whether you can reduce a little bit that apparent height? Like, does it have to actually peak up to be taller there in the center?
There's not too much of a, there's not too much of a space below the, above the ceiling, so I could slope it, you know, slightly more, you know, converge it in. Also, it might be possible to push it back slightly from the street if that-
Oh, that would be much better.
I'd have to change the staircase.
Right, because the staircase is right in the front of the dormer.
Well, that was a staircase I was creating, but I can, if I were to re-
Slide it.
But you wouldn't want me to go past the chimney, which is the back, you don't want, you wouldn't want this new attic portion to be beyond the neighbors.
Yeah.
Right, so I can maybe bring it back.
Yeah, but if you pushed it back a little bit more, and again, then it's less evident as imposing on the structure of the double attached, right?
You know, and if you look on drawing A4, I could move the staircase, the right, the staircase that's at the right, I'll flip it with, to the other side adjacent to the bathroom, and then I can just move back six, seven feet, the whole, the whole mass.
Okay, that'd be great. Please do. Great, thank you.
I think that, that'll-
A pleasure to work with you. Okay. Okay, so let's do that, and how long you think it'll take you to do that?
That's two weeks, because it's just-
Because it's nothing.
What okay they go.
The beauty of the cat. Okay, okay. So where are we, we're done. So if you could submit on the 24th?
Okay.
And I'll ask about speakers in a second. For hearing on March 10th, is that too much? It's okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Any other comments here?
I just gave the consent form because the neighbor next door is in that package, you know, both sides.
Oh, good. Okay, well-
I'm sure that was a concern.
Neighbors, they're ready, so.
In support. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 19, 20314BZ, 18 West 8th Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant. I know what V session brought up issues with a statement, will revise it noting that it's a pre-1961 zoning lot, preconditioned for 7711. We can also note-
You'll show some sort of proof that it's a pre-61 lot?
Sure.
Like a deed, something, right?
Sure. And then we'll also note the legalization regarding the egress, we did submit plans showing the two-
You showed your egress.
We did.
And I think my question was, you've got an easement on the back, an egress easement on the building, and I just asked you if your plan in any way impinged on that easement or interacted with, and you just needed to tell me no.
Just, it does not. Okay.
Okay, good, okay.
Done.
Commissioner Hanksen, do you have a mic on?
Uh, yeah, yes. I think something's turned down today. I think something's lower.
Yeah, something's a little off.
Okay, so, any other questions about this one? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so I think we can close this, just make that submission the modification of the statement of facts, and we're good? Okay. So for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter. I- Vice Chair Hanksen.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown.
Aye.
Okay, so if you could, I think we're just getting crazy, submit on the 24th for a decision on the 10th?
24th and 10th.
Hey, you know what you could do really, what would help us a lot, is underline the change in the statement of fact so we don't have to go looking for it. There it is, underlined.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like, like track changes, that kind of thing?
Sure.
There it is. You answered the question and we're done. Don't have to read your whole statement of facts all over again.
Done.
Great, thanks.
Item number 20, 24614BZ, 210 Girolliman Street, Brooklyn.
Todd Dale for the applicant.
What? We closed, and we did a submission schedule, right? Okay, sorry. Okay, so I think you responded to everything. You provided the sound attenuation details, that was helpful, thank you. So we can, any other questions, comments, any speakers on this? So we can close this?
At the previous hearing, we actually wondered if there was a way the board could close and grant today?
Yes, answer is yes to this, so for the motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hanksen.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown.
Aye.
And for a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hanksen.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I call in all the HPD together?
Yeah.
Okay, items number 21, 22, 23, and 24. 28414BZ, 28814BZ, which is 84 McLaughlin Street, 131 Cedar Grove Avenue, Staten Island. 297BZ, 14BZ through 314A, which is Topping Street, Staten Island. 30714BZ, which is 540 Hunter Avenue, Staten Island. And item number 24, which is 30814, and 31214BZ, 179 Kismick Street, 65 Hempstead Avenue, Staten Island. Great, thank you.
Hi, my name's Amy Peterson. I'm the Director of the Housing Recovery Office. Thank you for having us here today to talk about Build It Back applications. We're presenting the next four clusters of DSA applications for Build It Back, for seven properties for special permit 64-92, and two applications for GCL 36, waiver on an unmapped street. Build It Back is the city's program helping homeowners, landlords, renters, and tenants impacted by Sandy across New York City. We provide various options for recovery, including rehab and reconstruction of homes, reimbursement for repair work-
Take the chair up.
-and acquisition for properties. Acquisition of properties. Nearly 14,000 property owner, or over 14,000 property owners registered for Build It Back, and about 500 of them have one to four family homes that were demolished or severely damaged during the storm. The Build It Back Rebuild Program, where we rebuild these homes, is managed by HPD, and we're committed to rebuild the size and unit count of the pre-storm home while meeting FEMA's guidelines for flood resilient construction, energy efficient standards for Energy Star certification, and a two-year timeline. As part of providing assistance, we've developed applications to make the reconstruction as to make reconstruction possible, and if this zoning relief is approved, we will be able to start construction early this year. Two years after the storm, there's still, over two years after the storm, there's still an urgent need to get homeowners moving forward with construction and back into their neighborhoods and into their homes. We appreciate the fact that a number of procedures were modified and waived to simplify this process for Build It Back. We'd like to thank the board and its staff for their assistance, and we're looking forward to talking about these properties. Deborah's going to speak in detail about these homes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Deborah Morris. I'm the Director of Resiliency Planning at New York City Housing Preservation and Development. We attended yesterday's executive review session, heard the board's comments, and have prepared the following responses. A few of the comments pertain to several properties, so I'll begin with those first. Starting with our building prototype, which is a flood resilient construction, was designed with a plan for an exterior porch and stair because this provides both the most usable and efficient use of interior, interior square footage, allows the provision of understructure parking, and facilitates the provision of two required street scape mitigations through the covered porch or a porch with a stair turn. However, the provision of a porch, stair, and parking combined with the high design elevations in these buildings in general increases the size of the front yard and decreases the side of the, size of the rear yard. This is one of the design constraints of elevated structures, and in time, neighboring structures, as they come into compliance with flood regulations, will adjust in the street wall and yards will change, we expect will change in time.
Sorry, say that again, it'll change with time because-
We anticipate that the street wall of surrounding structures will move and change with time as the adjacent structures move into compliance with new flood regulations. So one, one issue to consider in these communities in Staten Island and Midland Beach is that many of these communities are both pre, originally those structures were, and the predominant built character is pre-flood regulations, National Flood Insurance Program structures. They're pre-1982 structures, they were built without any relationship to flood regulations. In addition, many of these communities are not, were not in the previous 100-year flood plane. The National Flood Insurance Program and FEMA are updating the, are in the process of updating the flood maps, and New York City has already adopted the draft flood maps, which include these communities in the 100-year flood plane, whereas previously they may not have been. So what you have is a majority of structures which are not built in relationship to any flood regulation and are not appropriately elevated. The buildings we propose will be elevated according to the requirements of Appendix G, and we anticipate as the cost increases and other changes in the National Flood Insurance Program go into effect in 2017, and as just people make substantial improvements to their structures over time, that the built character will reflect this change and the street wall will change.
Question, what is, the street wall will change because they're going to tear down these existing structures and move it back according to-
They're going to move, we, we believe that they will tear it down and push it back so that they can have an efficient footprint, which is having an exterior stair, and also parking requirements require two spaces, so if you're going to have understructure parking, even if you're not on properties as narrow as the ones before you today, you are very likely going to have a structure where you cannot have the stair turn. So you will have a porch as one of the required street scape mitigations for all elevated structures with a stair. So if the stair is added, if we're looking at, you know, defined flood, design flood elevations of 10 feet, that the span of the stair is going to be significant, and that's going to push the structure far from the sidewalk and far back from the right-of-way. I can be more specific in our cases because some include a widening line, and so that's an additional element here. So in the case of 65 Hempstead Avenue, in this particular case, we did not request any front yard relief because that would be a new request, and we were able to come up with a closer to as-of-right solution in relation to the front yard. There we believe we can push the structure about two feet closer to the street line, and we would just request that additional relief, and that's, we can, we can make that change, and that's a new request. We had previously tried to make the minimum request necessary. The rest of the properties on the southeast of the subject lot, you should know, are un-elevated bungalows, and we anticipate that the street wall will change. With 131 Cedar Grove Avenue, 288BZ, the, if you look slightly further down the block, the adjacent properties respect the widening line. I note that the widening line was actually, is what you see on the drawing, you don't see the right-of-way. Our building is set back to accommodate the porch and stair, which sets it back further than the two adjacent properties. We anticipate if the other buildings elevate, they will also move further into the rear yard.
With respect to that one, what's the setback from the widening?
So the drawing shows the widening line, and it does not show the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way. So we should correct the drawing to reflect the existing right-of-way, but what you are seeing is the widening line.
Okay, because that's the question, it seems like, as I mentioned yesterday in the review session, DOT is extremely responsive to us, so if you wanted to request measurement from the actual property line, we can get a GCL waiver included in this. That way you can locate the building properly on the site relative to a reasonable rear yard that's also complying with, or generally complying with, the front yard parking requirement.
Sure, I'm glad you brought that up because in the case of 131 Cedar Grove Avenue, there is actually an active DDC street reconstruction planned, so that, that is why we're respecting the widening line, because work will take place between the right-of-way and the widening line. However, on 84 McLaughlin Street, on 285BZ, we did note that the two neighbors do not respect the widening line, and we contacted DOT to see if there was a capital project planned. We can work through the DSA or we can work directly with DOT, they are willing to just give us a letter. We do, do want to note, and this is maybe the board can offer a suggestion, which is the other structures on the block besides the two neighbors do respect the widening line, so the newer buildings. So if you look at the street elevation, you'll see further to the left-hand side that there are newer structures that do show the, the larger front yard and reduce-
But they have backyards, rear yards that are of kind of a normal depth, no?
Um-
More closer to normal. I mean, you've got seventeen-foot rear yard, right? So just moving it a couple of feet, you, I think you have, if you measured from the, from the street line, from the property line, and DOT was okay with it, then you get, this is one where you need to have an eighteen-foot front yard, right? So then you at least get a little bit more on the rear because it's really squishing it down to barely anything.
Right. So I mean, with, um, in, with eighty-four McLaughlin, our one concern is it is a relatively narrow street, and it is not as narrow as, say, the ones on Topping, but it's not as wide as like Hunter Avenue. And we, we do not want to preclude future infrastructure work, particularly in these infrastructure and drainage starved communities, which are underserved. So our, our one hesitancy is to spend, you know, great capital dollars and put any part of our structure, even the stairs, in the potential right-of-way for them to be moved per, you know, maybe not in the next five years, but at some point soon.
So, but wouldn't DOT be the one who determines those potential-
So DOT can tell us whether or not it is in the current capital plan. They, they cannot project beyond that, and I, I think there are, but we have set before the board other examples on very wide streets that also have widening lines, and I, I would see there, and I think we have other examples in the future, where there's much more of a reason and justification to want to be in that space between the widening line and the existing right-of-way. With eighty-four McLaughlin, I am just a little concerned that even though that street might not be in the capital plan, but there would be an argument for that street to be served in the future by further city investment in, you know, drainage, widening, et cetera.
So, so with respect to all of, because you're bringing in all of these batches, with all of the applications where the rear yard is compromised because it's not deep enough, site's not deep enough to accommodate sort of in both directions, if you could give your rationale for why you wouldn't move it forward when you have a street widening opportunity, that would speed up our review, that we know that you've already looked at the question and have responded to it in advance of us asking it, because you know that this is going to be ongoing ask, right?
Absolutely. And I, I do want to add, I, we did hear your comments and continue to strive to improve the quality of your submissions and the clarity of our submissions, and we, we do appreciate that we do have mistakes and that there's a consistency issue.
Right.
Um, I, I have our architect here, if you have any building-specific questions, but the last issue you raised was about five-forty Hunter Avenue and that the building was in an area that is primarily vacant. I've brought maps to hand out.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
The exhibit I have for you today, which was, you know, done very quickly in response to your question, shows, it does not show all building footprints in the area. It only shows buildings that are registered and build it back. So, the buildings, I, I've circled five-forty Hunter Avenue, three-oh-seven fourteen BZ to show its relationship to other Build It Back properties, so that you can see that there is actually a, a community there that is under recovery and seeking investment. I think, I, I don't know what source you looked at, but when I looked at Google's aerials, the aerials are post-storm aerials, so they show a slightly higher level of vacancy than we would anticipate in the future, but it is an area that is under great change.
So yeah.
And the, the last thing I would like to add when we, is that we are very interested in working with the board and explaining the board, the program, Build It Back to you further and in detail, and when we have no items before the board, we would like to set up-
Oh, absolutely.
-a session. So, anything to expeditiously get these items through the review, then we would set that up when we're, before we file our next cluster.
And also, we're still waiting for a site visit on a completed prototype.
We're ready to schedule it as soon as we don't have items before you. Again, we're not going to submit anything until that meeting has happened. This is our last item before you. Just in relation to the GCL waivers with street widening lines, we are in conversation looking at it systematically with DOT to reduce the load that would come to the board in the future.
Okay, great. So are there any outstanding DOT approvals for this that are needed, waivers? No, we're good. Okay. So I actually do have a question for Mr. Ginsburg, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Hi.
So one of the questions I kept posing to the various representatives from Build It Back was the subject of the open garage, where when there's no car in it, or even when there's a car in it, you're basically going to be looking at everybody's junk, and it's not exactly a street, sort of a neighborhood, street condition that's typical in this neighborhood. You see everybody else has a garage door. So my question is, and I, I was just in a place where there were all of these really clever ways of inexpensively dealing with garage doors without having to have an automatic one or anything like that, so I just wanted to hear your comments on, on that.
Well, I should step back for a second. One of the reasons, and this is changing somewhat due to cost considerations and so on, that the base of the building was designed to be open was to prevent any illegal use of the area within the flood zone. And as you enclose it more so you can't see what's happening inside, there is a greater risk of an illegal apartment or other uses that you don't want. So one of the original concepts was to make it open, but to put lattice around it, et cetera, to make it not look like it's floating up on stilts. There, there are ways to do it, and I know there's been a back and forth in discussion on this with our developer and HPD of how much enclosure there is, and I think there's going to be on a number of them, more enclosure than there was originally. But as to, you know, we, we can look, look at it, but the original objective was to leave them fairly open so they couldn't be illegally converted.
You really think that's going to stop them from being illegally converted? I mean, if somebody's going to do something illegal, they're doing something illegal. But generally, the people who are abiding by the law, by the way, they have to park a car, and they have to put their stuff someplace.
I actually think it would, but that's obviously a conjecture, in that if it is not enclosed and people can see in and there's no way to enclose it, you can't do things. As soon as you have walls and doors that prevent people from seeing into the space, it is much easier to do things because just, there were hundreds, if not thousands, of illegal apartments in the flood zone that are no longer there, but clearly it's happened in the past.
And even if this was kind of some semi-open lattice, where, you know, all-
Well, that, that could be, and, you know, we could look at that. It, it also becomes a cost issue as we're trying to build resilient, energy-efficient, attractive houses at a, within the, the budgets that are available, but we, we have looked at that.
I, I'd like to get more information on what you've looked at, you know, not, I mean, in general, going forward, on what you've looked at, what the costs really are. I'm not talking about an automatic garage, you know, door. I'm talking about really a fence, basically, that's on a little bit of a hinge that's borderline of a Home Depot purchase. I'm not really seeing the huge expense, so.
We, we definitely can look at that.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions, Tom? Great, thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? So this was a closed grant, right? Okay. Come forward. So I think you responded to all of our comments. Thank you also for revising the various statements of facts to coordinate with everything in the application. That's kind of an ongoing thing. We're going to try to simplify what you submit to us, so there's only one set of data, and you just refer to that data, and you don't have to do it three times.
Great.
So, okay. So for a motion to close? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
And for a motion to grant? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown? This is for all the cases. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to do a little switch-up for the new cases. The PCE first. Is that, has someone here from Ackerman? Okay, great. Item number three, two-forty-nine fourteen BZ, two-hundred Baychester Avenue of the Bronx.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Farhadian, appearing this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, two-hundred Baychester Avenue. I had the opportunity to attend your executive session yesterday, and I understand that you didn't have any comments, so I would just respectfully request that you close the hearing.
Okay, we actually did. There was a request that if this is an operation and massage is going on here-
Mm-hmm.
Is massage going on here?
Yes.
Is this an operation?
Is this an operation?
Is it open yet?
It's not open yet, no.
Oh, good answer. Okay, so we're done with that. The masseurs need to have licenses, but since you don't have any of those, we're good. Okay. Yes, so any comments, questions? Any speakers on this item? So we can close this. Chair Perlmutter?
Um, yes. Aye.
If I want? Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
And I'd like to move to grant, so we don't have to look at this again.
Okay.
So for a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okey-dokey. Now, item number one. One-eighty-six fourteen BZ, fifty-one sixty-three Bond Street, Brooklyn.
Maybe somebody could turn the lights on?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, sorry. Could someone flip the switch up? You got it? It's like ten people over there. I don't want, one of them could flip the switches. Two left. Mrs. Bond. Good.
Okey-dokey.
Okey-dokey. Okey-dokey, as she says. There we go. It's been a long day right now. Yeah, wait a minute. I think we need to put the lights on, right? Are we good? All right. I know we've got to get-
I know we've got to get carriers in a long time.
It's a bit of a relic. Should we get some Rennes salaries? We should buy some, right?
We used to have, like in Forty Rec, we used to have the tripods?
I know. I don't know.
We don't have them.
I don't see those anymore. We've been using this.
Yeah. Well, that's because we use this. No, I guess all right. I guess that's okay. It's fine. I was just thinking, because sometimes they have this, and then they have these things. You know, you have two, like, dimensional stuff.
Yeah, no, unfortunately, we got, we had various interior design fairs and stuff. Okay. Good afternoon. Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Lyra J. Altman, representing the Bond Street project that you are so familiar with.
Why, please, hand here.
Okay. We did attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. Many of the comments, of course, will have to be responded to in writing as they are significant considering your requests. We would like to address some of them, though, here at the hearing. One thing I will tell you is that the EAS is going, is being provided by Philip Habib. He is currently working on it. You will have it shortly. We will be providing that prior to submitting the rest of the material, so your board will have an opportunity to review that. If any other additional comments are handed to us by the examiner, we will gladly respond to those comments for the next hearing as well.
Great.
In addition, we will be revising the statement of facts and findings, of course, but the first thing I'd like to get to is I'd like to have the engineer speak, because the crux of this case really is the hardship that's based on the subway that is running below our site. We have a number of engineers here with us today, three to be exact, who are all prepared to discuss the specifics of the subway itself and the specifics of what we need to do to deal with this. So I will hand over the microphone.
Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Hi. My name is Jeff Smilo. I'm the USA Director of Building Structures for WSP. I'm going to explain the structural system and the hardship imposed resulting from the-
Take the mic with you. Hold it in your hand.
From the subway system. What's very unusual about this site is seventy percent of the footprint of the building lies directly on top of the subway tunnel. You could see it in the diagram in the colored zone. The white zone is the portion remaining, the thirty percent that sits on, let's call it virgin soil, at the moment. The transit authority requirements are very clear. We are not to impose any seismic or wind loads on the subway's structure for obvious reasons. The subway predates the seismic requirements of the New York City Building Code. In order to accomplish and meet that requirement, the entire, what we call lateral system of the building structure must sit on the remaining thirty percent of the site. It becomes kind of obvious. The loads become extremely eccentric, and that resulted in a pile system foundation in an area in Brooklyn that's perfectly suitable for conventional footing foundations. As structural engineers would do with numerous projects on the neighboring blocks, the one is directly across Skirmerhorn Street, not on top of subway. We have conventional footing sitting on soil. This site in the white zone is one-hundred percent pile-supported. So this, this is the first aspect that I wanted to point out. The second aspect is the portion of the building that lies on the colored zone, the green and the pink, and sits directly on top of the subway, sits on a mat. The subway system was engineered to hold the weight of the new building. It's not an issue. The issue, or the hardship, results from the vibration of the subway. It's kind of obvious. It's not going to be very comfortable sitting there and having the trains rumbling underneath you, especially if it's a hotel. In order to mitigate that, is a significant vibration isolation system that's placed throughout to mitigate the vibrations from traveling up through the building. These are the two primary items I wanted to point out in this session.
Yep, we have more questions for you, actually, so.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So this is a very schematic plan, and we're actually really used to looking at engineering drawings that show the elevation, so, and which you may have there. I think I'm seeing Ms. Altman pointing to stuff. Okay. So, so what we would, would want you to do is go through with us where, what the depths are with respect, because in the, in the general summary, it says that the depth at worst is seven feet below grade, but it's, and, but there's sort of points on that colored map that say, here's a fourteen and there's an eleven, but it's not clear at all what the range is and where it occurs, so that's probably too hard to see from here.
We, we have that in this session.
Right, okay.
We'll pull that package.
Okay. And then, and then the other question was, in the engineering, I think it's actually a letter from you, there was some statement about cantilevering of the structure versus bearing directly on the subway. Where is the cantilevering?
For all intents and purposes, we are not cantilevering the structure. It either sits on the white zone or the colored zone.
So all the gravity loads for the building over the subway will be taken up by the subway? It just has to be uniformly distributed?
Exactly.
No point loads?
Exactly.
Okay. So I don't think that was very clear. So you're actually using the subway as your foundation for gravity loads?
Correct.
Okay.
One-hundred percent.
Please, please state your name for the record. Sorry.
I'm John Holliday, also with WSP Building Structures. And I believe the report that you've seen that talks about a cantilevering structure is referring to the resistance of lateral loads, and what we're really trying to say is that all of the lateral loads are resisted in this corner of the building, but the lateral loads are applied over here, so that you get this, it cantilevers from this point, kind of like, if you can imagine a signpost with a sign hanging off to one side. We have this vertical core that comes up that resists the lateral loads, but all the lateral loads are implied very eccentrically to that core, so it's really a lateral cantilever, not a, not a vertical cantilever. We're not, not vertically cantilevered. We're bearing down here and bearing down there, but all lateral is in this corner.
And, and that's an unusual situation because-
Extremely.
And what would you do if you didn't have the subway there with respect to lateral loads?
The footings would deposit the load, both gravity and lateral, in their natural location, coming vertically down, and transfer to the soil via friction at the base of the footing in their natural column position.
So in that area, that little triangle that's at the top, that's not part of the subway itself, are, there are columns there? Wouldn't those receive some lateral load?
No, there, there is subway there. There's, there are two parts to the subway, this portion and, and the portion-
Oh, that's also subway.
The full Skirmerhorn Street is subway.
Okay. Oh, I see. Both of those lines are subway. So no matter what you do, there's no way to prevent this movement on-site in both directions?
I have, correct. And having worked in this area of Brooklyn over the years, it's obvious why these sites have been left undeveloped for many years. And, and only quite recently, obviously, with the current situation in the city, we're trying to make use of these sites for building development, and it's an extreme hardship.
But you can give us a schematic of where all the caisson piles are gonna be, how, which ones are gonna be cased, and all the other elements of the foundation?
That's, that's in the box. I mean, if you haven't seen it?
We have, we don't have that.
We don't have those.
No, not at all.
Okay, great. Other questions for the end here?
Well, for the as-of-right building, oh, the theoretical building, your papers say that the spread footings would be located on the outwash sand.
For the proposed?
No.
For the as-of-right? For the theoretical ideal building?
The typical, right.
The theoretical.
Right. However, when the excavation figures were done, it was only carried down to 14 feet below rig, whereas the outwash starts, starts at about 20.
I think, I think we'll call upon a geotech engineer to talk about it.
Yes, I'm Al Brand. I'm with Musa Rutledge Consulting Engineers, and we did a series of borings on the site. And there's a glacial till layer above the outwash sands, and both the till, which we call stratum T, and the S, which we call the sandy materials, are suitable for spread footing foundations. 14 feet is about the shallowest depth where those materials exist.
Well, I don't think all the till had the same, you know, bearing capacity. And I believe the papers that were submitted said the spread footings would be on the outwash.
That would be most likely the case. By the time you get down to a certain depth for foundations, including footings, they would be in that range of depth.
So I think the excavation figures and all the corresponding numbers that go with it should be increased for the ideal as-of-right. As a comparison to the proposal.
Well, that, that could be examined. I think the, the, the engineering point, though, is that all of the natural soils at the site, below the materials we identified as fill, would be suitable for shallow foundations. Could be spread footings, or it could be mat foundations, but they have varying capability.
I understand what your question is. It's regarding the question of what can support versus where we're saying the excavation is and the fees. We will look into what you're requesting and see if there are any inconsistencies, and if so, we will have them corrected.
Okay, thank you. Because that's not what I saw, actually. I'm trying to check the borings again. I didn't see the same material in the till as there was in the outwash. The outwash seemed to be a superior footing material.
We, we will certainly review it.
And also, when you give us the foundation plans, you're gonna show us where all these different mats are going to be located.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Any other questions, comments about that? Okay. Okay. Thank you. In addition, we have with us today the architect, who will address some of the architectural questions that were raised yesterday. Of course.
Good afternoon. My name's Paul Wermchuck with Stonehill &amp; Taylor Architects.
Say your name again.
Paul Wermchuck. And, and looking at some of the comments from the executive session yesterday, there was a question about the ballroom.
Mr. Wermchuck, could you pull up the mic just?
There was a question about the ballroom and its, and its height. It's in fact a two-story ballroom.
You can actually take the mic with you to the board if you need to.
Yes, so the ballroom is a two-story ballroom. You enter it from the second floor. This is the volume above on the third floor. And on the fourth floor, we have a stair transfer. So structurally, it's three stories, but we have a stair transfer across, and then we have thick concrete structure allowing for that span, event space, volume to be spanned across the slab.
If you had a floor there, you wouldn't need the stair transfer, correct?
Uh, well, we need that space for, for mechanical, for ductwork that's here on the west side. We'll need that for a thickened slab, so it's not, it's not a true full-height floor condition.
Sorry. What, do you have a section through that? Like, what, what's going on in section there?
In section, it looks like a three-story.
It looks three stories, because it depends on where you take the section, right?
And it's three stories that can't be used for rooms.
Yeah. But the third, so when you're standing in the ballroom, are you aware of that stair transfer corridor flying over your head? No.
No, that'll be behind a finished ceiling, so it'll be above.
So you have a finished ceiling that starts at what level before you get to the floor of the fourth floor, of the, of the fifth floor?
It's in line with the, with the, with the fourth floor. If you see this plan, the, the stair transfers across, this is, this, these slabs are at the same level, and the finished ceiling will be below that, beneath that. So when you're, so when you're standing on two, you look up and you see the bottom of the fourth floor.
So you just have open, but open space as you're going through the skyway, in a sense? You just have open space around you?
Yeah, you have ducts around, it's going to the side.
So you're using that sort of as a big plenum to run ducts, and then you've just got a corridor that transfers the ducts? But what's the height from the floor, fourth floor, floor level to the ceiling at that spot? If you're standing on the X?
Right, so this is a, this is a standard guest room height of nine foot zero slab, the slab.
And if you're standing on the X, is that open to below?
Yes, you're, you're on two, so you, you, you're standing on two, you're looking through three, and you see the underside of four.
So...
So approximately 20, 24 feet.
So you're saying that whole thing is filled with ductwork that's eight feet high? That's a huge space for a relatively small building. I'm not getting that.
I don't know.
Well, you also have the additional slab thickness to create that spanned opening. So the slab is three feet thick. You have concrete beams here that are eight feet thick. This is, as you had mentioned, more of a diagrammatic representation.
I don't understand, yeah, it seems like, I mean, a section through this would help, I suppose, understand this, and discussing with the engineer why you need to take up so much space with mechanical and so on, because that's very useful for rooms or some income-producing thing, not understanding why you're using that all up.
Paul Wilson.
Sure.
Please recite your name for the record.
John Holliday of WSP Structures. Once again, in order to keep this space column-free below at the second floor, so we have a completely open space, remember that above this, we have 10 stories of hotel rooms, and there are quite a few columns that come down. What you do not see in this view is, at the underside of the fourth floor, are two very deep, eight-foot-deep and five-and-a-half-foot-wide transfer girders that really take up a great deal of this volume.
That's the ceiling of the third floor, right? That you're talking about, these transfer beams?
I'm sorry, the ceiling, yeah, the, this, no, well, it's, it's the fifth floor. Excuse me, I, I got, was off by one space. So the fifth floor, because it's a transfer floor, it has two very deep beams that come down almost to the fourth floor. If you're on this bridge, you're actually being, you're walking between two very large transfer girders.
But would you need that if you didn't have a two-story open space below that was a ballroom? If you just had rooms for the lower floors, would you need all of that?
Well, you'd have no, you need the eight-foot transfer below the fifth floor to carry all the columns that would like to come down into the ballroom, but you want to keep them out.
Right, but if you didn't have a ballroom, and you just had rooms, just like you have on every floor, and you just got rid of that ballroom?
If you had no ballroom, you wouldn't have those transfers.
Then you'd have three stories' worth of, of rooms.
Yes.
Probably eight rooms in each floor.
Yes.
For 24 rooms.
That's something that will be addressed by Jack Freeman from Freeman Frazier. We have talked about that as well, and he's going to address that for your board. Do you have any other questions for the architect?
No, if you could provide just a, a section through that room to show us the depth of the beams and all that stuff, this way, section.
Right. We'll be glad to do so.
Is that the most economical structural system, to be able to span that distance for, and then be able to transfer your loads?
Well, perhaps. Mr. Smilo could speak to that, but this was started as an all-concrete building.
I was gonna say.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question fully.
It's a pretty big span for, for an all, I would think you'd want to make it a little bit lighter and maybe, you know, do it with a couple of trusses that would be sort of elegant, and one could utilize that, that structural form in your ballroom, which might be nice, but would also enable you to bring down your, you know, your loads and transfer them in a smaller, more compact way.
Well, obviously, different types of structures can, can be utilized, steel or concrete. The concrete system, as shown, the reason it's wide as well as deep, is to try to keep it as shallow as reasonable. Would a steel system change the eight-foot depth appreciably? Not appreciably, because we're trying to keep the economics within a workable number. But to answer your question, you could always have mixed materials.
No, I was just trying to free up some space.
It, it wouldn't.
Commissioner Brown's comment was, is that perhaps then you have the ability to have more rooms, you actually can have a floor to have rooms on. So it just, it just occurred to me that, you know, you're, you're eating up a lot of real estate for a ballroom that, you know, that maybe doesn't get used that much.
Well, we're eating up vertical space, and a steel truss system versus the concrete system eight feet deep will not have an appreciable difference, maybe a foot or 18 inches.
Right, but, but the question for me is that you're, first of all, you're taking up space that I feel that could be used for rooms that actually generate income on a regular basis, but you're also asking for extra floor area and an extra floor, which might be expensive to construct as well. So the question for me is, if you could fill in the space that you have in the building with rooms, do you really need to have an extra floor full of 24 rooms, which is a greater expense, because you're now extending it to a higher floor? So that was the question I had, and also, that leads to greater FAR, larger bulk, bigger impact on the neighborhood.
And, and that will be addressed in response from, from someone.
Thank you.
All right. Well, actually, I want to point out that we are actually not adding an extra floor. This building, the bulk of this building, the exception of the floor area, of course, is as-of-right. We are not increasing the height of this building. We are not reducing the yards. I think it's very important to make sure that your board is aware of that, because what we are requesting is additional floor area to make up for this hardship. The architect worked very hard, to knock over words, we worked very hard, the architect did, to make sure that this building would minimize the impact on the community, and the way he did that was to maintain an outside-of-the-building envelope that was permitted, and to find a way to get that floor area into that permitted envelope, so that the building would work economically and at the same time would lessen the impact on the neighbors, and that this is the envelope that the zoning already contemplated was permitted.
Right, but I'm, I wasn't talking about whether or not it required a bulk waiver. I'm talking about the effect of the building on a very low-rise neighborhood to the rear, and whether or not that could be lessened. So it doesn't have to do with whether or not you need a waiver for that or not. You do need a waiver for the floor area. And so we have the discretion to determine whether or not, number one, you need that waiver for the floor area, and if you do need it, where it should be best placed.
Understood.
And so that's where the question comes up.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure that your board was aware that we were not requesting a height waiver on this. That is very important that you're aware of, because as I said, we minimize the request as much as possible.
We do read our papers, Ms. Altman.
Understood. I do know how many applications you had in front of you there today. To be fair, this is your 25th application of the day.
No, but you know that our underlying theme is neighborhood character. It's a finding for the variance, so, right?
I do, and we will show you, actually. Mr. Wermchuck has a drawing. Where's that drawing? That goes right to the heart of the neighborhood character.
Could you move it over a little bit?
Yeah, it's blocked, actually, by the podium, so maybe you could bring it forward of the podium, or that one. Can you see that?
Paul Wermchuck again. So this is a neighborhood view, looking, this is the lower-scale south side, and in the darker gray are the proposed developments of the neighborhood. We are here in the lighter shade block diagram, showing that we're at the same height as our in-construction neighbor at 140 feet, and showing...
What's the line that's behind you?
So this is a, an existing parking garage that's being dismantled, and Jeff, is that your, this one, is that yours? So this is...
That's across the street, yes. That's being done by...
Is it? TF Cornerstone?
And what is it, housing? It's T, of course.
Housing.
Yeah. Okay. Just to give you a feel of the character that we're talking about here, it's one thing to review the character just in terms of what's behind, but if you really look at the whole block, you will see that there are a number of large buildings rising currently as we speak. Of course, we can't show it to you with the buildings in, because they are currently under construction, but this is what's been approved. This is what's happening to this neighborhood right now.
So the TF Cornerstone project is still in construction? Or you're in the development, design development?
The TF Cornerstone project.
The TF Cornerstone.
It's in construction.
It's in construction, okay.
This should give you a full view, and this is, by the way, directly across on Skirmerhorn Street.
But it is a very wide street in comparison to State Street and Bond Street, which is where this property is closer to and has a very large effect on.
This, we front right on Skirmerhorn and Bond.
You do.
This property right here, which is also 140 feet tall, also currently under construction, also fronts on Skirmerhorn and a corner.
Right, but directly behind you is State Street, which is very low-rise in comparison.
Identical to this building, realistically.
State Street is here.
They're back up to the same.
Well, maybe that's something that you could talk about, the relationship of the other tall buildings to the low-rise that really backs up against them. So you're kind of creating this wall along Skirmerhorn. Maybe that's an urban characteristic, but you should discuss that as an urban characteristic. You might have urban cartographics help you with that.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Next, I know there were a number of questions on the financials. With us today is Jack Freeman.
No, no, actually, we had a question about the rear yard. The, so this is a question for the architect.
We are going to add all dimensions onto the plan, I believe that was the question.
No, it wasn't a dimension. It's to check the regulations, because this is a district boundary line.
Of course, we are 33, 292 and 293. As you see on the zoning analysis, that was contemplated when this application was filed. The belief is that it actually goes from the zoning district boundary line, and we do provide 30 feet from the zoning district boundary line.
You do?
Yes.
On the side?
The zoning district boundary line, on the side, we're looking into it, there may be a slight modification, but at the rear, which is 292, actually, we do provide 30 feet from the zoning district boundary line. There are 20 feet on our site and approximately 10 on the other side. We believe there may be a one-inch differential that has to be corrected.
Okay, but the side lot that's on Bond Street, that probably needs an eight-foot setback.
It looks like we're going to need a foot setback at curb. We believe, we're not quite sure. We are working on that right now, but I will tell you, the rear yard section was contemplated, and we do believe that is the correct interpretation.
So again, the, the drawings are really unclear in terms of zoning compliances, so
We did hear that comment yesterday, and we are already working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Commissioners, Madam Chair, my name is Jack Freeman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We attended the review session yesterday. We heard a number of questions. We'd like to respond to some of them, and others we will respond to subsequently in writing. Not necessarily in any order, because it came at the beginning and then at the end. I want to address the question related to what I believe is 160 Skimmerhorn and 71 Smith Street, which also includes another property, which is 180 Skimmerhorn. This was a three-parcel whole block that was acquired from UDC around 2003. It was sold at below-market rates. It was purchased by one developer. It was then subsequently developed, not for an affordable housing project, but for a low-income and supportive housing project using low-income housing tax credits. So, both the acquisition of the property at the time and the subsequent development of the property was based on a completely different financing model. One parcel remains completely undeveloped, and I think you can see that on Urban Cartographer's map, which is 180 Skimmerhorn, because it is completely above the subway. That remains as a parking lot. There were no transfer of development right transactions. It was all one parcel, and it was turned into a merged zoning lot, so that any unused development rights moved to 71 Smith Street, which is being developed. 71 Smith Street has a portion of it, as shown in Urban Cartographer's, with a subway impact, but he identifies it as being 30% as compared to 70%. So, in response to the questions, it was not an affordable housing project. It was a low-income and supportive housing project developed by the Actors Fund and Common Ground, I believe. It was a very special project, and it got a tremendous amount of public subsidy, both through the tax credits and through the original acquisition in 2003 from a public entity. There were no separate transfer of development rights, and that was not in any way related to making that project feasible. One developer acquired all of the three parcels and then subsequently subdivided it to facilitate the Actors Fund Common Ground project, and the residual development rights were used on a market-rate project. We did look at what the ultimate transaction was for that, and it was right on in those in terms of what we estimated the value of the property, but it was, again, not a separate... And it's hard to get into how much of it was development rights, how much it was land-valued, but it's not something that could be considered comparable to our project.
So, I'm just trying to understand. So, was, is 160 Skimmerhorn also on top of the subway?
160 Skimmerhorn is on top of the subway for a portion of the site, and the property is setback, so it significantly avoids the subway. It was also, any cost related to the subway, it was developed by a not-for-profit entity that was provided with quite a comprehensive financing package, all of which, and its income, it's a not-for-profit, provides housing for former entertainment professionals, which are, who are HIV-positive or low-income. It's a very special project.
Right, but I mean, if they were dealing with the subway, it's a cost that's very difficult to overcome, right?
Well, but you have to factor in, Madam Chair, what the acquisition cost for that property was.
Right.
It was a low market, sold by a public agency to one developer, and...
But I mean, for instance, if they had a $20 million, as you're talking about, something in range...
It was built a while ago, too, so I mean, it offset, the building itself is offset from the subway. It's a very small dormitory kind of building. It's not a hotel, it's not a residential building. The residential building on the corner was developed as-of-right. Partially, it received the residual rights from the whole three-parcel transaction, and the transaction recorded is just slightly below what we've estimated the value of our property to be.
So, how do you, how do you know that it's setback off of the subway?
I looked at it.
You looked at it, okay. So, you know where the sub, you know where the subway is in terms of your drawings?
I'm looking at, okay.
That's because we don't know this information, okay?
71 Smith Street, as reported by Urban Cartographer's, has the ability to span over the subway with its structure, as opposed to having to sit on top of it. 180 is, subway occupies, according to the diagram, the entire site.
Right, okay, so we'll get into that with Urban Cartographics, because you're getting your information from them.
Well, they can speak to that, and they did provide a diagram, but the building itself doesn't sit on the full site, so I have to assume that the design of the building was maximized for efficient costs relative to the subway. It does not occupy the entire site. It's a small sliver of a building that runs parallel to Skimmerhorn Street and occupies less than a site. It has a setback. But again, the cost necessary to overcome, for a not-for-profit that doesn't have to make any profit, for a site that was acquired as part of a public transaction at a significant discount, and for a low-income housing tax credit project, the cost of funds, all of these things would be things that would assist in developing a project at a cost that cannot be done on the site. So, I don't believe, one, it was referred to as a possible comparable. I don't believe that it's comparable. Two, it's not a typical affordable housing site. It is a very special low-income housing tax credit site, which is also supported in its operating level by public funds for the supportive housing component. So, the economics of it are so different than what would be for any market-rate project. And 71 Smith Street, which is the residual piece that was developed, it was developed basically as-of-right, and the acquisition cost was similar to the cost that we estimated for our property. And I would assume that the combination of being able to use part of the development rights that weren't part of the Actors Fund project that were remaining, and its own zoning, and the fact that it could span the subway, made it a reasonable project. If you don't need a variance, you don't want to come here, for one.
Aww. Speaking of coming for a variance, you mentioned, I think in your papers, about how other sites were able to transfer development rights and overcome...
Well, I want to speak to that as well, Commissioner, okay? You don't overcome anything. You have to buy those development rights. Those development rights cost you money, they increase the cost of development, and they don't work to offset what the hardship costs would be. It's just like buying an extra piece of land. You're not getting those for free, so the overall development cost will be equal to or greater as a market-rate site. So, transferring development rights is not something that offsets hardship costs. Secondly, our site has a number...
But we actually picked that up. That was in the documents submitted. I don't know if you said it or...
I didn't say.
Or Cartographics said it, but please coordinate the experts so that they all agree.
We'll try to do that, but as the economic spokesperson here, you have to pay for those development rights, and you're not, you're not offsetting the cost of the hardship. Also, I mean, our site has, as was mentioned, a lot of individual small parcels, all in separate ownership it makes. Unlike this parcel, which was all acquired from UDC as a single parcel, so it wasn't like somebody bought the development rights separately. It was what was left over when the whole parcel was acquired. One would have to acquire individually-owned parcels to be able to create a development rights transfer, and one would have to pay for those, so it wouldn't necessarily result in anything that would offset the cost of development. It would just be an additional development cost. So, I think that was part of the question, both, I think you had the question at the end, and I think the chair raised that question at the beginning. Regarding construction costs, there was a question about the $212,000 elevator cost. There are two elevators that cost 212, and that is not a high cost for elevators.
No, but it was looked at as a premium cost. That I didn't understand. Why is that a premium?
I think that might have been confused. That was, it was $212,000 in elevators that were not necessary because of, in a typical site, which is what generates the definition. Those elevators were not necessary. These elevators bring up one to, up to the second floor, and one down to the basement in two different portions of the site, because the elevator structure system can't be continuous. So, these are...
Oh, so this is, in other words, because the cellar is kind of over there...
Right.
And the core is over here, and a separate elevator...
You had to have two separate elevators, one only going to the second floor and one only going down to the cellar.
I see, okay.
Site protection costs, I think we'll have to provide you with detail. The delta there was $203,000.
Right.
There was not a lot of detail provided, so we can provide you for that. $2 million, would you, I believe, refer to as expensive for a stairway? It was not for a stairway, and if you read the small print, it was for all of the MTA-related costs, and the stairway was only one part of those costs.
We have no details of what it was.
We'll provide you with the...
It just sounds like you threw a number in.
Well, I didn't do the construction costs estimate, so...
Yeah, yeah, no, so, but the guy who did...
We'll have him provide you with detail, but just as a point of information, a stairway was only one part of the cost, and he did have a small list of all the things that were included, including MTA monitoring and stuff.
He had a narrative that was tied to the chart.
We'll do that.
And so, which was actually really great. So, there's the chart, and it tells you which place to look in the narrative, and then you look in the narrative, and it says, "We have a deal where we have to connect some emergency exit for the MTA," and then you go back and you look at the line, and it says $2 million. So, that's why it still sounds like a staircase now.
There was a short list of stuff, and I think he needs to provide the detail. You're right. We will, and this has come up in other projects, identify what the profit and loss and soft-cost factors are. Regarding the hotel, I mean, the industry standard is PNL/CURFORCER, which does an annual analysis of submitted hotel data for costs and percentages of income, and they do that on a regional basis and also on a class of hotel basis. So, we'll provide that, and then we just use that.
Going back to the hard construction costs, can you give us all the quantities and the unit costs for excavation and foundation?
I'm sorry?
All the different items involved?
I will have that done.
And all that?
Yeah, we can provide that detail. I mean, I didn't do the cost estimate, again, I just used the product, but we reviewed it, and we'll get you the detail you're asking for. So, we will identify the PNL and soft-cost factors. The event space I want to speak to, it was labeled as event space and also as ballroom space. That event space is there as a market enhancement to make income and occupancy assumptions more viable. Competition and the comparables that were in the STR report don't have that space, but we believe that the enhancement is something that will provide the ability to sustain the level of income and also the occupancy assumptions that were made, which we don't feel were particularly conservative. We think they were rather aggressive, and I'll speak to that a little bit later. But basically, the purpose of the event space is to provide an enhancement against what else there is in the market, and you're absolutely right, the other spaces don't have it, and we think this is going to make this hotel more competitive. The unencumbered space does have event space. It may not have been clear, but we'll correct the inconsistency.
No, that wasn't mine.
Yeah, that was, that's...
Yeah.
But it...
I tried to consolidate.
My question, which maybe you're about to answer, is how did you factor in the income for the event space? It's not just a market enhancement, you rent it for a ton of money.
It's in there.
Okay.
It's in there.
It's under other?
The industry sta, it's under other.
Right, that's what I figured it's under.
And there's another line for income, and there's another line for expense, and we'll... That's the way it's done. I mean, it's not broken out, so much for this wedding, so much for this suite-16 party. They don't do it that way. It's listed as other income and other departmental expense.
But there's a way for you to come up with that number, that on average, the space is...
I look at what, I really look at the information that's available, and I use experience and judgment and conversations with people in the hotel business as that, should it be 3.5% or should it be 4.5% or 4% of income that one would attribute to that? There's no, it's not done on an event, by event basis.
Right, okay, but can you provide some backup for your experience and judgment and conversations with people in the marketplace?
Yeah.
Right, because...
But all I'm saying is, I will do my best, but...
But it would also give us information about the utilization rate of that space also, because that's what you're, I would assume your assumptions are based on the type of space and how often it's utilized, and probably, you know, the price of a typical event or whatever in a space that holds that kind of capacity.
I'll give that some thought, Commissioner, but I really go by what industry standards are for the other category, and they tend to vary by geography, and they tend to vary by the class of hotel. And it's very difficult to ask, get the information on a per-hotel basis as to how many bar mitzvahs they have every year and what they charge for those. It's not, it's part of the overall other category of income, and it's very difficult to segregate that, but I'll do the best I can.
Oh, isn't other, doesn't other other include other other stuff?
That's the way they, that's all they say, is you have rooms income, you have rooms expenses, you have food and beverage income, you have food and beverage expenses, you have other income, you have telephone, you have income.
Right.
You used to have more for telephone, but...
So, I, is this, this isn't a spec construction job, right? This is being built for a specific hotel operator, or this is built on spec? I mean, is there already a hotel operator in this conversation among the designers and all that stuff?
Right, but my...
No, I'm asking that specific question. If there's a...
They're in discussion.
They're in discussion. So, they're in discussion with, let's just throw out a name, Marriott or something like that. Marriott, in order to make a living doing this, has to decide whether in this hotel that they're about to somehow or other get involved in contractually...
That's where we start.
There should be a ballroom, as opposed to another hotel where they might say, you know, "No services here, this place can't support the services." And there must be some economic analysis that's different than room service, that fits into whether or not you decide to go to the expense, and there's a huge operation expense involved in running a ballroom, catering for it, all the people who have to work in it.
I will speak, I mean, that's where we start.
Okay.
Okay, we start by asking, okay, what are you, what are you thinking about here? And then we compare that with what, you know, in terms of our methodology, what exists for similar hotels and what kinds of room rates. So, we try to aggregate everything. I mean, everybody has different projections, and I've, you know, in my experience, I've seen major hotels have tremendous losses, and I've always found, you know, developers to be more optimistic. I have to try to independently assess this, and I try to use the best information that I have available, so I'll share that with you.
Right, okay, but the second floor, the entirety of the second floor is this event space, right? And we talked about how it's actually sort of projecting up to the fourth floor, basically, all of which could be an amazing income producer if there were rooms. So, there must be some economic analysis that says it's worth risking building the entire second floor plus a good chimney of those other floors and devote it to event space.
Wow.
So, you can't leave it as other. That's not persuasive.
Well, but that's...
You've got to pull that out and say...
If I pull that out, what I've said is that the room rates and the occupancy rates are making the assumption that this event space will be an enhancement and allow us to achieve higher rates. If I pull out that space, then I have to make an adjustment in the room rates, and my assumption, I will look at it, but it's not a zero sum.
You see, but I don't think you have to, because most of your comparables do not have that extent of event space, except maybe the Marriott at Brooklyn Bridge. Talking about Hotel Le Bleu and the Ascend Collection on Union Street, the Fairfield Inns and Suites, that, these are your comparables, and they, those are smaller hotels that don't have that amount of event space.
I will, I will take a look at them, but I...
So, the question is, if we fill in this space with rooms, and perhaps it's a lesser variance scenario, and because we're filling in this space with rooms, we don't have an extra floor, we take one floor off of the bulk, which costs less to build, because it's one floor less, is it more feasible to have it as rooms versus one big void in the middle of the hotel?
We can certainly look at that, Commissioner. We can certainly look at that, but I will say that rooms on the second floor are not worth the same amount as rooms on another floor, and I believe, and I have to double-check it, that the assumptions we made as to room rates, looking into the future and how we escalate those room rates, are rates that are generally a little, and we've done that before, generally a little higher than we get from the STR basis for comparables. We try to take into account the difference between each of the hotels and what they have. So, we'll take another look at it for you. But I'm not sure that, A, that gets to the other point. The STR report is a statement of fact. It is not a trend projection, it's not a market study, and looking at what things are going to be five years into the future is something that you cannot project from one year's worth of STAR reports. So, you try to make a judgment on that, and...
You're talking now about the occupancy rate.
We're talking about the occupancy rates, but also the escalation of room rates.
Right, right, but the question I need answered is, is I need the logic that went behind your statement, that there was going to be an occupancy rate of a certain amount here. That's why I asked, is there more stock coming online in the next couple of years in this area? Yeah, put it, you need to put that in.
I'll put that in, and there is more, much more stock coming in.
Especially when it kind of deviates from what your report might suggest.
There is stock coming online, there is a market that has to be considered, and we'll provide you with that. Okay, but when we make the projection, we take into account as best we can. If I had a crystal ball, I probably wouldn't be doing this, but...
You have another one. But if you, just one last thing about the event space. You're saying that it enhances the marketability of the rooms, but it also, because we're in an urban context, I mean, we've all been to zillions of events at the various hotels that have event space, right? And we take the subway there, or we take a taxi there, or we don't... or we don't stay in the hotel, none of our relatives stay in a hotel. Everybody is showing up at the event space because it's a convention for local industry, right? So that's got to factor in, in a way that's not related to improving room rates.
I'll discuss that in my response, okay? Secondly, I think Commissioner Otley-Brown thought the retail rent comps could go higher. We'll review the comps and we'll address that. We spoke about the event space ballroom and the STAR report. I think that, I think, answered all of the points that we had. I think the comp question was related specifically to the retail and to the relationship of our hotel to the STR report comps. So if there are any other questions on the economics, I'll be glad to answer.
I don't know, are there any other questions for Mr. Freeman? Okay. No, I think that was it. Thank you. Okay, and... So there... I did have another...
Yes.
Oh, yeah. With respect to understanding... this is related to the comps also, but actually, this is something the architect would be giving us. So to understand what the various room sizes are in each of the three scenario, because I know Mr. Freeman got that on the side, but we didn't get that, so...
We do have that on our list of items to provide. We couldn't provide to you today, and I wouldn't dare ask him to stand here and read that aloud to you.
No, please.
But we are certainly going to provide that, along with the other information that was requested yesterday. The other thing I'd like to point out is that you will be speaking with Ian Rasmussen again from Urban Cartographics, who's going to be providing the back of information. I spoke with him this morning, and he is already at work on that. Regarding the photo streetscape, we are going to have that redone as well. What they had done was they had tried to impose the bulk of the building above. I understand the board did not care for it done that way. We will have it done differently for you as well.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other... say?
Sea finding.
Go ahead.
Well, regarding, you know, some of the information we got from the area residents, the concerns regarding the outdoor event space and the location of the entry to the hotel.
Oh, actually...
And even, you know, to me, it doesn't make sense to have... I mean, to get to Bond Street is like this circuitous, difficult series of one-way streets. And it seemed to make more sense to have it on Skirmerhorn.
We did hear that comment, and actually, Mr. Wormchuck is behind this wall for a moment. I believe he's going to come back out and address that. He meant to address that before when he got up and spoke, the architect. He's just pulling out a board right now to show you for that discussion.
Okay, Paul Wormchuck, Stonehellen Taylor. So this is the ground floor plan. Again, we have the entry off of Bond Street due to the fact that the elevators are here in this bottom left corner, so that they can be in that virgin soil area and off of the tunnel. So there have been some alternate schemes showing the main entry of the hotel into this stoop area here off of Skirmerhorn, but those are still preliminary.
Oh, so you're giving it some consideration?
Correct, yeah.
So you're looking... okay. And what about the second floor event space?
So this is the event space that has a terrace to the rear. We were developing a detail for acoustical panels that can be demounted or installed whenever an event occurs, so that it would shield any sound or visual impact to the neighbors to the south.
But they're really going to... I mean, temporary doesn't really make sense, right? Once it's up, it's up, right? So then I... so then you actually have a structure that you're not permitted to have in the rear yard setback, right?
Right, so that's the demountability aspect of it is...
But these so-called temporary things become permanent, so if that's something... I mean, I'm not sure how successful this acoustical separation is, and so... and maybe what you're really talking about is not having an outdoor space at the location that's right at the level of neighbors, right?
Right.
Where hotels are famously the things that are the greatest nuisance in terms of the outdoor party space, even when they're on the roof, people complain, right? And this is the lowest setback level, so, yeah.
Right, so the building does setback here, so this would be...
No, but it's the lowest setback level. You're on the second floor, your second floor is essentially people's windows and so on, all of this residential area.
Right, it could not be filled in this way, it would be left unused in that scenario.
Right, but so that's the thing. It would be, you know, if it was guest rooms that were going out onto there and people were arguably quietly sipping a coffee, that's a different thing than however many hundreds of people can fit in that room...
Right.
...constantly with the noise, I doubt that, for one. I doubt that you'll be able to isolate the noise, and for two, you're talking about essentially building a wall above the allowable height for isolation, right?
What we'll do is we will look into see what we can do that would attenuate any sound and minimize any potential disruption to the residential neighbors while still potentially maintaining that space of the hotel. Let's see if we can come up with some sort of a compromise that would satisfy all parties involved.
Okay.
Is it possible to have some sort of a view, like a simulated view, of what that would be like from the neighbor's point of view? Because it just seems to me, if you're going to have a wedding and you want to... you're a neighbor and you want to use your own backyard, and all of a sudden, 100 people pour out of those doors...
That's not going to work.
You know, drinking and carrying on with music blaring, it could be horrible.
And I've actually, myself, worked on sound insulation, like same exact situation for a playground for kids in a school, and that wall was tall, right? Because the way that sound moves around, the wall was extremely tall.
Let's look into it and see if there's something that can be come up, can be done to solve this.
It's also going to be pretty dark back there, isn't it? I mean, it's...
Do you have the south light coming from the south?
I'm looking at Google Earth right now and looking at the lot, and I'm thinking, my goodness, you know, that's going to be a... it's a little claustrophobic.
So the light comes from the south, right?
It's a lot claustrophobic, actually. But it won't... if it's coming through, if the south is... it's coming from the south like this, and you have a wall that... I'll tell you, what I worked on was a 35-foot-high wall above the terrace, right?
It's never going to get sunny.
You're not going to have sun, it's going to need special floodlights just so you can go out there during the day, right? So, and it's a 35-foot wall that you're building up against the rear lot line, where you're supposed to be keeping it open.
I don't believe a 35-foot wall is what was being contemplated here.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you, my own experience was little kids, high-pitched voices, and drunk people also have high-pitched voices.
Add on other things.
Let's see what we can do. Give us an opportunity to address that, please.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Ms. Altman? Okay, so we're going to take speakers on this. I don't know if there are... if we can divide this into opposition. It would be helpful if people who are in opposition would speak together. If you would stand on the ramp and come in orderly fashion, and you are limited to three minutes, there will be a signal that goes off at the end of the three-minute... after the end of the signal, you have 10 seconds to wrap up. And we're going to hold to this because there are a lot of you, okay? Thank you. First speaker, please, and state your name for the record.
I'm Jim Devro, 379 State Street. And my house is... that is right here, my garden is right here. So if I can make an example of the outdoor space in this room where we're here, from this wall to that column is about 40 feet. And the top of that is about 20 feet, roughly, approximately. So what we're going to have, if this is the back of our houses, what we're going to have is a deck up at that height, very long, with all the people, you know, looking down on top. And, you know, that wall that's going right up there is... it's going to make... like, we're already getting half our skyline wiped out with this building, and I don't think any consideration has been taken in for the residential neighbors of when they were designing this hotel. I've emailed them hundreds and hundreds, lots of emails, and with no response whatsoever. No, nothing to give me any answers or confidence in what they're doing. The parking on State... the entry on Bond Street is like... they're two residential streets. I've lived on the block for 20 years. It's already a jam-packed street, Bond Street. And what they're doing is bringing all this commercial traffic right to the residential streets. While Skirmerhorn is right there, that leads right on the Flatbush, commercial corridors. I'm nervous because I don't public speak, but it's insane. Like, I really think it's insane to bring all that traffic to our neighborhood. And if this, with the acoustic panels that they're talking about, all they're doing is, there's a deck here, and there's nowhere for the sound to go except me and my neighbors' three-story townhouses that have been there for the last 120 years. And we have a large apartment building beside us, we have a PS 329 school beside us. I feel like I'm going to cry. So we are there. We're going to get every sound, and I'm very familiar with construction, I'm in real estate. Even somebody on a cell phone talking on that deck, we will hear them clearly. All we are going to be, from that wall to there, you know, you can hear me whispering nearly at that point. And I really believe no consideration whatsoever has been taken for the residential. And also, the impact on this construction for two years, if they get their variance two and a half, three years. Like, you know, this is my income, this house, I haven't rented out. The garden won't be usable for the next two and a half years with my tenants right there. And they're not going to pay the rent they're paying right now. Are the tenants upstairs even going to stay? I don't know, with the noise of construction. Still feel like I'm going to cry, but... They're the three relevant points, the deck is a complete... I've since... I have no correspondence from the developers, they never sent a letter to my house. So I just found this out by mistake, and I went to a meeting in the church in November, and I kind of found out by mistake that they're going to do a paved area there. After that, I just email them constantly. I've got petitions from all the neighbors, you should have them here, that sign against everything, and they can't all come here, but they're totally... this problem already exists across State Street with Backhouse Restaurant. All the neighbors there, from 396 to 400 State Street, are in chaos. There's a hotel down in Brooklyn Heights, I know I've gone over my time, that have a roof deck on there, and they've had to go there 12 blocks away in last summer several times to tell them to turn the music off. They could hear it clearly in their apartment building. So anything... and these developers are saying that, you know, this banquet hall is going to create better than all these hotel rooms. So that means this thing is going to be full all the time. The two doors open off the banquet hall face us. So the minute that door opens every time, it's like we got a bang of music right in our back garden. This is not even 20 feet away, this is like literally on top of us. They control cigarette boats at us. It's ins... you know...
We understand.
Anyway, I'm leaving that out.
We hear you, and I'm sure we'll hear some more of that. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Chairperson Perlmutter, my name is Jeff Shotwell. I own 375 State Street, which is directly next door to Jim Devro. And you've all identified the issues that we have here with respect to the congestion that's going to be brought to this neighborhood and the issues that are going to impact us directly behind this hotel from the outdoor space use. Commissioner Otley-Brown, you correctly identify the fact that this is a very residential context behind this hotel that is going to be directly impacted by this. They're going for a significant amount of relief with respect to a 45% increase in the density of this building and a 70% increase in the room count. In exchange for that, to whatever extent the board does indeed grant relief to the developer, there should be a mitigated, codified ruling with respect to the use of that outdoor deck. It really should not be used at all for any commercial purposes whatsoever. It should just remain roof area, and that's what it should be, provided they get the interior space, they get their exhibit space, whatever they get, they're just going to have to mitigate the use of that outside. That's what it's going to have to be. Regarding the entry on Bond, it is self-explanatory. You correctly identified, all of you have. That is absurd with respect to the size of Bond Street, the size of the adjacent streets, all being one-way, you've got two-way on Skirmerhorn. I've seen the plans. It could be easily redesigned to put the retail that would be taken away by having an entry on Skirmerhorn, placing it where the entry on Bond is, because it would be allowed as a right in there as a retail component, and that you'd have an extra 15 feet to walk to your lobby desk in the elevators. That's it, that's the only impact. God knows I've been to enough hotels that I've walked 40 feet to the elevator. That's really pretty much the issue. Another safety, life safety issue is if the streets get congested because of the entry on Bond, and you've got the firehouse, the 226 ladder firehouse down there, and they can't get that truck out, for whatever reason, because of the limos or the cabs or whatever congesting that street, which I've seen happen without the hotel, that becomes a real, real consideration, has to be taken into account, absolutely has to be. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Ready? Alexandra Dadorian Nelson, 434 State Street. I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. I just really am here to really just echo exactly what he said. You have my name now, you have my address. Bond Street is already congested, it'll just back up Atlantic Avenue, it'll back up State Street. I live right across from the 226. A suggestion was made to even talk to them about what... how they feel about that. None of them live there, so they would really give an unbiased opinion about what... you know, they live there when they're working. And the capacity, which you guys have also... this is my first... doing this for the first time, and I feel very confident that you guys understand where this spot is, understand what's at stake for the neighborhood. And so I just appreciate that you're looking at where the entrance would be, the capacity, and this outdoor space and the noise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, my name is Tim Walther, and I'm president of the State Street Cathedral Block Association. That it's on State Street from Bond to Hoyt. And I've been president of that block association for too many years, believe me. But I represent many of my neighbors, some of whom already have spoken, and some who were here earlier but couldn't stay. We actually welcome the addition of a hotel, particularly a fine, upstanding, upscale hotel in our neighborhood, but we want them to be good neighbors. And I'm going to reflect the same thoughts that have already been spoken. One is the entrance on Bond Street. The only people that it seems to make sense to are the developers. Everybody else we speak to says it just doesn't make sense. It's an extremely narrow street. Skirmerhorn is about twice as wide as Bond Street. I personally have seen... I've been there 27 years, but I've seen two cars get their side-view mirrors clipped because the street is so narrow. As a matter of fact, for your benefit, I've got some pictures of Bond Street that I'll pass around for you to see. The first three show Bond Street as it is. The last one gives you just a history of how the neighborhood used to look before our blocks got active and cleaning up the neighborhood. So feel free to look at these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I also want to emphasize the police... Fire station is in the next block, and they have to cross Bond Street. And as someone mentioned earlier today, talk to the firemen and ask them how they feel about that. Bond Street gets backed up very frequently now, and if you add a hotel entrance to that very short, very narrow street, it is a prospect for disaster. The other two things I wanted to mention, one is the density of the hotel. We object to the increased density, simply more traffic, more people, more trash. We see Skirmerhorn as being a transition neighborhood, a transition from our residential, very sweet residential street. By the way, we did one win, greenest block in Brooklyn, twice in a row on our block, and we're proud of that, we're the only block that hasn't done that. But the next street, Skirmerhorn, is kind of a transition to the higher rises that then occur on the other side of Skirmerhorn and in downtown Brooklyn. And so we think that is an important thing to keep in mind, so that, you know, the capacity is reasonable. And then the last thing is the outdoor space. Enough has really been said about that, but my only last comment is imagine yourself, if you had a house and a hotel opening, some party space right behind you, right up into your lot line. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Karen Montell. I am the legal agent, or also known as durable power of attorney, for Curtis F. Brown, who is the current owner of 381 State Street in Brooklyn. I'm grateful to be here today and to have this opportunity to speak, particularly after a five-hour flight delay, as you can imagine, and... And I also submitted a notarized letter via overnight express, but was told it was overlooked by the New York Post Office, so clearly some systems of checks and balances need to go on. So, I've had a couple of faux pas's today, but I'm glad to be here. So, and I will mention why I mentioned that later on in my testimony. Nearly 50 years ago, my family bought the property at 381 State Street and 379 State Street, which is now owned by Mr. Jim Devereaux. The reason for buying this property was for protection. The neighborhood was not what it is today, but I think my family had the vision that it would, it was going to be a great neighborhood, and it is a great neighborhood. These decisions were not on a whim, it was clear there was a plan. Unlike my, my day today with my airline, and unlike the post office that failed to call apparently the Board of Appeals, and my point being here, that when we don't make great plans, things sort of fall through the cracks, and that's something that I think those of us opposed this are deeply concerned about. It is clear to me that plans are not, when plans are not well thought out, when crafted, our proposals don't consider other people's lives and property. I would hope developers would consider what they would build in their own backyard as they propose to build directly against our backyard, and it would be right up to, as you can see, right up against our fence. Reacting to problems as they occur, which is what I was told the developers would be there to do, is not proper planning, it is simply reactive as opposed to proactive. I am here to oppose the proposed hotel structure entirely. I know many people that live in the neighborhood are happy to have a hotel. I do not share that. 13 stories or otherwise. As it directly abuts the residential property at 381 State Street. I, I, if it, if it is to be built, I do consider, I feel that the two, the second-story balcony or deck that's to be built, I find that simply in poor taste and somewhat perverse to be that close to our living space, both indoor and outdoor, to be able to see into our windows and that sort of thing. Whoa, I'm way over. In addition, if it were to be built, I have issues, as most people do, with the mechanicals, the heating vents, air conditioning vents, anything that would create VOCs, volatile organic compounds, odors and the such. Also, because it is such an old structure built around 1850, could have been a little bit earlier, I worry about, again, the windows and the structure. We just had significant work done on our basement, we haven't even worked our way up to the rest of the structure. We feel that the community, as it is now, people watch out for each other, they sweep their streets and their neighbors, they water plants, they make sure that neighbors are okay, and when people are away, they watch out for their property. I feel like now, we have, we will have people in our neighborhood that have no stake in our neighborhood, and it's important for people to, to, for us to feel that that is, that occurs. So, I would, if it is to be built, would definitely oppose the Bond Street entrance for the same reasons that everyone else would. So, please consider these proposals carefully.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think you're over the time. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Price, I live in the next block, I don't live in the effect, immediately affected area. However, the increase in traffic, the pollution caused by the increase in traffic, I think will affect all the way down my block, and I'm half away. I'm opposed to the Bond Street exit, entrance, for all the reasons that have been given already. I am particularly concerned that there is no buffer between this hotel, if it has to be built, and the lot lines. I, I, it's just, it's just hard to imagine how such a thing could be allowed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I, too, represent the residents and the owner at 381 State Street. I'll be very brief to make up for the time that my wife overturned, over beyond her time.
Say your name for the record, please.
Donald Brown, I'm sorry, Donald Brown, thank you. I'm not gonna repeat, because I do feel this acts exactly the same way all the other residents do, I'm not gonna repeat it. All I'm gonna ask you to do, because I think by listening to you folks today that have spoken, you guys are intelligent, you understand the situation better than I thought you did by far. And I'm just gonna mention, this is not Smith Street, this is not Court Street, this development is going on on the butt side of our residential street. I understand State Street is bordered by commercial zoning all around, but I've been told by a good source that our State Street is protected. That's residential, it'll always be residential, it cannot change, is what I was told. So, we are an exception, we are actually only three building, five building, five floors high. Yes, they're allowed to have 13 stories on Skirmerhorn, but we have to consider the fact that we are not like downtown Brooklyn. We are considered residential, and we like it that way, and we wanna keep it that way. So, with your help, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chairperson Perlmutter and commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Mike Chumbly, and I'm here from T.F. Cornerstone in order to voice our support for the BSA zoning variance request for additional square footage for the proposed hotel. This plot of land poses significant construction difficulties. Due to the subway tunnel that has made the development unfeasible, and has left a parking lot as an eyesore for the community. As a developer, we understand the unique challenges of this particular site. Ordinarily, you could pour a mat slab foundation to support the building, but because the subway is so close to the surface, GFI will be forced to support the entire building on only 30% of the site area. To do so, they needed to pour a very deep caisson foundation, which is extremely expensive and has had considerable impact on the project's economics. For decades, Skirmerhorn Street has been a neglected thoroughfare with limited attractions for residents and tourists alike. At certain times, the area can feel unsafe. The proposed hotel will act as a catalyst for business and retail growth in the area. There will be event and meeting space for local businesses, as well as restaurant and retail space for downtown Brooklyn's growing residential population. Future hotel guests will further aid in the growth of local businesses, which will create hundreds of jobs and will further, for our neighborhood residents. Furthermore, this hotel will provide much-needed sleeping accommodations for the friends and families of residents in our community. It is our understanding that the new building will remain within the current height restrictions, and will be contextually in character with the neighborhood. Additionally, there are much larger buildings currently under construction on the corner of Skirmerhorn Street and Flatbush Avenue, and at our site, across the street at 33 Bond. The developer and designers of the hotel are known for their award-winning concepts, ensuring the development will not only fit within the neighborhood, but will be a welcome addition embraced by the local community. Please allow the record to reflect our strong support for the above-mentioned zoning variance application. I sincerely hope that you approve the application, as this building will be part of a meaningful investment in our community and its future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
You stole all my good lines. Good afternoon, Chairperson Perlmutter and members of the board. My name is Rick Russo, and I am the Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer at the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, with offices at 335 Adams Street in downtown Brooklyn. Today, I'm delivering testimony on behalf of Brooklyn Chamber President and CEO Carlos Chisora. The Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce is a membership-based business assistance organization, which represents the interests of over 2,000 member businesses, as well as other businesses across the borough of Brooklyn. We would like to offer our strong support for the BSA variance application requesting additional square footage for a proposed hotel at 51-63 Bond Street, also known as 252-270 Skirmerhorn Street in downtown Brooklyn. The hotel will provide much-needed meeting and event space for local businesses, including a vitally-needed ballroom. There is a lack of such multi-use space in the borough, particularly in downtown, and it would attract significant trade shows and conferences to Brooklyn, which simply cannot be accommodated at present. We strongly believe that the hotel will serve as a catalyst for business and retail growth on both Skirmerhorn Street and the greater downtown area, creating hundreds of much-needed jobs for neighborhood residents. The development will bring about a boutique hotel of 285 new rooms, plus retail and fine dining within blocks of the Barclay Center, Brooklyn Academy of Music, Mark Mars Dance Theater, Theater for a New Audience, and City Point, amongst other sites. The developer, GFI Development Company, has sparked similar neighborhoods in Manhattan with the Ace New York and Nomad Hotels, and expect to do so at the Beekman Hotel and residences, which is currently under construction. GFI is equally committed to continuing the transformation of downtown Brooklyn. GFI Development is noted for their unique concepts, ensuring the resulting product will fit within the context and character of the neighborhood. The Brooklyn Chamber strongly believes this project will be a major boon to the area, a welcome addition that will be embraced by the community. GFI is seeking a variance to allow for increased density to build a hotel due to the extreme subway tunnel hardship outlined in their application. They do not seek an increase in the allowable height limit, modification to building setback requirements, or building air and light requirements. This site has been an underutilized parking lot for over 40 years, due to the hardship of building oversight with 70% of its area encumbered by a subway tunnel underneath it, some seven to 15 feet below the surface. We respectfully urge the board to approve GFI Development's application for zoning variance, as this project will be a significant, meaningful investment in Brooklyn's community and future. As the voice of small business and job creation in Brooklyn, the Chamber is especially excited about this project, and it's exactly the type of smart development that we need for our local economy to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, I'm James Ellis, the Executive Director of the North Flatbush Business Improvement District. I thank you for this opportunity to present to you, Chairperson Merliter, as well as the other members of the board and guests this afternoon. I'm here, I stand before you on behalf of Regina Cahill, the Board President of the North Flatbush Business Improvement District, who is unable to attend, in support of the variance application requesting additional square footage for a proposed hotel at 51-63 Bond Street, also known as 252-270 Skirmerhorn Street in downtown Brooklyn. The North Flatbush Business Improvement District is a community-based nonprofit organization that promotes economic development along the commercial corridor and the neighborhoods of, uh, commercial corridor and Prospect Heights and Park Slope neighborhoods of North Flatbush Avenue from Atlantic Avenue to Plaza Street. Brooklyn is booming, and has quickly become a leading destination in New York City residents, for New York City residents, as well as visitors from all over the globe. Downtown is bustling with residential and commercial development, and North Flatbush has seen tremendous change with the opening of the Barclay Center. However, Brooklyn is severely underserved with the amount of hotel rooms available. The addition of 285 hotel rooms would be much needed to host Brooklyn visitors. These additional visitors are key consumers for our commercial corridor, and we look forward to serving them as they visit our local businesses that are nearby. The hotel would also be a great source of jobs for our community residents to walk to work, both in construction and in the hospitality sector. Additionally, the inclusion of meeting and event space would also relieve the pressure for appropriate venues that would host business conferences and celebrations. We hold the belief that this hotel would be an integral component and catalyst for sustaining and growing our local retail businesses. GFI is committed to the Brooklyn Renaissance as they bring a boutique-style hotel option similar to that of their previous projects around Manhattan. GFI is seeking a variance to allow the hotel to be built with increased density, as you're well aware, and I'll skim through this, the addition of this, the addition to using valuable floor area for back-of-house operations, and the rising cost for necessary structural fortification add to the GF, add to GFI's hardship, and this additional density would offset this. Again, as repeated before, they do not seek an increase in height, allowable height limit, modifications to setback, or building air and light requirements. Additionally, for over 40 years, this space has been an underutilized parking lot with very little prospect of development due to these infrastructural obstacles. GFI Development is noted for their unique concepts, contextual design, and sensitivity to the community character. The North Flatbush bid is encouraged and excited by the addition of much-needed Brooklyn hotel rooms, and believes this project would benefit our residents with jobs, our businesses with additional consumers, and add to the showcase of our community. In closing, we encourage the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals to approve GFI Development Company's application for a zoning variance.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Bethany Boyer, I'm with the Downtown Brooklyn Partnership. Chairperson Perlmutter and commissioners, thank you for your time. As the partnership's Deputy Director of Real Estate and Planning, and the Services Manager for the Court Livingston Skirmerhorn Business Improvement District, which this project is part of, CLS, I'm here to express my support and favor of the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals variance application, requesting additional square footage for the proposed hotel in downtown Brooklyn. As representative for the CLS bid, the addition of a boutique hotel on what is currently a parking lot in a corner intersection in the heart of CLS would bring a long-neglected lot to life. This project is part of the tremendous change happening on the streets of CLS, with new construction and street activation being part of a larger urban renaissance downtown Brooklyn is experiencing. As the community shifts toward a more 24-hour resident-friendly lifestyle, neighborhood, the project is a testament of these positive changes to the community, and in addition to the additional dining and lodging it will provide, much-needed meeting and event space for local businesses and nonprofit groups in the area. For these reasons, I strongly support the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals variance application, and hope that the BSA approved the application presented here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Shabazz Stewart. I'm coming to you today on behalf of the Fulton Mall Improvement Association. As the Services Manager of the Fulton Mall Improvement Association, FMIA for short, I'm here to express my strong support in favor of the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals variance application requesting additional square footage for a proposed hotel in downtown Brooklyn. Fulton Mall, the city's third-largest retail district, stands to benefit tremendously from the completion of this project, especially in regards to the planned coffee shop, restaurant, and event conference space. Although the Fulton Mall has traditionally provided a first-class retail experience, we have struggled with entertainment and culinary attractions. Simply put, shoppers have few places to go once they are done purchasing and shopping. Located two blocks away from the busiest part of the mall, the hotel's coffee shop and large restaurant will add a compelling alternative for shoppers who are looking to eat and drink without leaving the mall. Moreover, the new events and conference space will add programming opportunities to a district that lacks activity after 7:00 p.m. We hope that these exciting new components will help keep shoppers in the mall for longer periods of time, inject the neighborhood with energy during the evening hours, and provide an opportunity to attract additional conference business. For these reasons, I strongly support the above-mentioned New York City Board of Standards and Appeals variance application, with the hope that the Board of Standards and Appeals, excuse me, approve the application today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Ryan Gru, I'm the Metro Tech Bid Services Manager, and I just wanna say thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As the Services Manager for the Metro Tech Business Improvement District, I am here to express my support in favor of the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals variance application requesting additional square footage for a proposed hotel in downtown Brooklyn. As a rapidly-growing residential and commercial district, Metro Tech stands to benefit greatly from the new hotel rooms and dining options that this project promises. Area workers who fill our office buildings have complained that there are few options for dining in the area. We expect that this restaurant and coffee shop, only located three blocks from the heart of our district, will provide a compelling option for workers, especially during the evening hours. Additionally, we expect the addition of new rooms to provide a compelling alternative to business travelers who often choose to stay in Manhattan. Commencing these travelers to stay locally would represent an economic boon for our district, especially during the evening hours, as they would patronize local bars and retail establishments. For these reasons, I strongly support the above-mentioned New York City Board of Standards and Appeals variance application, with the hope that the board approved the application presented today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Vasco Stankovic with Ingram and Heverin Realty. Dear Chairperson and Commissioners, I am, I am sitting here on behalf of a local commercial real estate business owner to express my support in favor of the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals variance application, requesting additional square footage for a proposed hotel in downtown Brooklyn. As a business owner in downtown Brooklyn, the addition of a hotel would activate a space in the heart of downtown Brooklyn that is dormant, serving as a parking lot for decades. This hotel has the ability to act as a catalyst for business and retail growth on Skirmerhorn Street and the surrounding blocks, and will make a significant positive impact on the larger downtown Brooklyn community. In addition to supporting businesses' growth through street activation, a new boutique hotel would provide a place for visitors to better experience visiting downtown Brooklyn. The restaurant and coffee shop spaces are much needed, and will provide an option for residents, businesses, local employees, and visitors to enjoy the area. For these reasons, I strongly support the above-mentioned New York City Board of Standards and Appeals variance- and Appeals variance application with the hope that the Board of Standards and Appeals approves the application presented today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Are there any other speakers? Okay.
I'd like to point out that there were also some other people here in support earlier. I know your Executive Director met with them previously, just so we could attest to the fact they were here before they unfortunately had to leave. In addition, I do have thirty additional letters and forms for consent to hand up to your board.
Thank you.
That is in addition to the ones that I personally handed in last week and ones I'm sure you have received independently of me.
Okay. So, some of the more obvious comments were about, for example, why the entrance is on Bond.
As the architect said, we are certainly already looking into that. We were aware of that.
Right. So, more than looking into it, move the entrance off of Bond. Don't look, do. It seems super easy because you can just move it to Skirmerhorn and then walk through the lobby to the same elevator core, or you're gonna need to move your elevator core back, I think, anyway, because of the eight-foot side yard or setback rule, um, so...
Actually, the setback rule would only be if it was against a rear yard, so the first fifty feet of the property wouldn't require that.
Actually, there's a side yard requirement, so...
The side yard?
Yes, it's, when...
Thirty-three, two ninety-three, you're referring to. That's only when your side yard lines up with a rear yard of a property in a residence district. The first fifty feet, our side yard, lines up with a side yard in a residence district?
Two ninety-one, not two...
Two ninety-one, okay. That wasn't referenced. We hadn't reviewed that section. We'll be glad to review it.
Okay, so take a look at that, because we do think there's at the very least an eight-foot setback requirement to separate commercial from residential. Great landscaping opportunity to buffer, because there was a discussion about buffering this use. On the one hand, great that you have this great, successful business, but at the same time, you're right up against a lot of residents, and so buffering should be your kind of general theory in the design process. With respect to the outdoor space, I was looking at your second-floor plan, and there are actually, there's a roof setback that faces Skirmerhorn, and I'm wondering why you can't use, instead of having back-of-house in that location, why you can't have that be your outdoor space? Because I noticed you can't lever actually over your own space, so why can't you have that part be outdoor space, comply with the setback requirements from the residences? And I think you're still good to provide outdoor space that makes noise on Skirmerhorn and is completely blocked from the neighbors.
The architect will look into that.
Because the other thing, so this is more than a look into, this is a do. You already have a roof over the winter garden that's not accessible, so the rest of that roof that is bordering along all the private, all the residential should also be the roof of a winter garden or whatever you want to make it that's not accessible. Okay? That's not a look at, that's a do.
I understand. I can't agree to it without speaking with my client and the architect, of course.
Okay. Um, and then, other...
Just because it's all the information we asked for?
Yeah, the information we asked for, and maybe we want to look at that whole issue of that multi-height floor and whether something can be done about that. I understand a ballroom needs to have height, but at the same time, maybe there's a way to deal with that and get more hotel rooms on that fifth floor, fourth floor. So, that would be the lesser variance. It's a little tricky, because some of it's not floor, it's not floor area when it's not really a lesser variance, right?
It isn't, but I think if you look at a lighter structure, I understand the concept of needing to, you know, have a concrete building. It's nice, but it's a really, really heavy building and requires you to have a lot of mass. So, if you can lighten up the building a little bit, you might be able to then have, you know, a two-story space, but then get enough space to have a floor of, of rooms, which you don't have that space now because you're taking it up with the depth of that slab plus a whole lot of ductwork.
The engineer can certainly look at that as well. I think that was heard loud and clear.
It's, it's a heavy building.
And I'm just curious, you know, this huge transfer floor, just because you want to span over, whatever that is, a sixty-foot ballroom space on the second floor, why isn't the ballroom on the roof?
Yeah.
Then you don't have anything to hold up. You can have a greenhouse on the top there. I, I'm not really understanding. It seems like you're adding so much structural cost just to have what ultimately probably isn't that great of a ballroom, because, you know, it's down there on the second floor and all closed up, and I understand maybe room, guest rooms aren't as ideal on the second floor, but you already have guest rooms on the third floor. Can't be that bad. So, take a look, or for instance, you might have, the second floor has more of these small-event space rooms, and the ballroom, which takes some glorious elevator to get to, takes you to the roof, and then you don't have all that spanning problem and all that stuff, and now you get some hotels' rooms down on that lower floor and really no issue about having an enclosed, beautiful ballroom space that's not going to make noise to the neighbors on the roof. Okay?
Much shorter building.
And a much, and a shorter building, by the way.
It might be smaller.
Um, not, yeah, not to say it's not an as of right height, but at the same time, we're trying to get the lesser variance. You're asking for a very, it's a very big floor area ask, so to the extent...
Well, it is a very large hardship, as you acknowledged yesterday, to be fair.
It's a large hardship, but the bulk, right? You know, the bulk is kind of artificially increased because of, really, all about this ballroom, which sort of doesn't make sense.
If I could just respond to the ballroom, why is that the second floor?
Could you take the mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
Paul Wermchek, Stone Hill &amp; Taylor. So, we have an event space elevator so that people can come from the neighborhood and enter the ballroom space right from the street level, so that it's located closer to the street level. People aren't traveling all the way to the roof to attend an event, so it's...
Because they stand in an elevator for an extra minute and a half.
But the elevator only travels to...
You know, go down the street here, and there's a nice ballroom space that we've probably all been to. You get in that elevator, and you're at the top of the building.
I mean, the construction cost would go down. The hardship of the construction would go down significantly with no transfer floor like that. Just saying. You should look at that. Seriously, very seriously look at that, and then Mr. Freeman will run the numbers to show why it's not going to have any impact in terms of your return. Okay. All right. Any, any wanted?
That's basically what I wanted to say, was that if you could fill in that ballroom with rooms, you might not even need a, a floor. It makes the project cheaper, and then you don't need as much FAR.
Right. Okay. All right, um, so there's a lot of homework.
There is a lot of information, but...
Yes.
This is a client who moves very quickly.
Okay.
So, if we could submit on 3:10, continue hearing on 3:24, please.
Um, what's 3:24 look like? Good? Okay. That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Oh, does the opposition? Does the opposition get a chance to review this, any kind of organized review? So, all these materials are available online for, I mean, sorry, they're available to be reviewed in the office, right? So, if anybody wants to see these submissions, if you had, like, a single representative who just said, "Send it to me," that would be another way of dealing with it, but there's a lot of you, so I'm not sure. Work that out and speak to Mrs. Altman about who would get a copy. March 24th. Okay. Thank you. Thanks all for coming. Appreciate it.
Okay, item number two, 23814 B.C.
Thank you for coming.
Please be reminded, the hearing is still continuing. Please leave quietly. Thank you. 23814 B.C., 9800 Franklin Street. It's been a long day. My sugar level is...
Oh, my God. It's late for my classes.
Jim Power, how are you? We've got a lot of objection. Uh, you know, if you ever want a copy of them, we can get them to you.
It's better when they leave tomorrow.
I'll go open it after.
Huh? Those came in, I guess, yes? I just got the mail this morning. This is 238, yeah. Just a minute, please. There's some more. What happened? Okay, sorry.
Good afternoon, Chair, Pro-Mother and Commissioners. Jim Power from Kramer, Kramer 11 Naftalison Franklin, on behalf of the applicant, DDG 100 Franklin LLC. We will try to proceed quickly through our presentation. This application seeks a variance in connection with the construction of two mixed residential and retail buildings on a single zoning lot on the property known as 100 Franklin Street in Lower Manhattan. As we will discuss further, despite the unique conditions of this site, no floor area modification is requested, and each of the requested waivers is modest and the minimum necessary to afford relief. The requested waivers have the effect of reducing the total height of the proposed development and reinforcing the street wall and result in a building that has been found by the Landmarks Preservation Commission to be appropriate to the Trebekka East Historic District. The property is located on the block bounded by Sixth Avenue to the east, Franklin Street to the south, White Street to the north, and West Broadway to the west. The property is burdened by a number of unique conditions. It is small at only 4,129 square feet. It consists of two roughly triangular portions, each of which must be developed with separate buildings, with a standalone building with separate building systems. This condition resulted from the extension of the, of Sixth Avenue and the Eighth Avenue subway in the 1930s. The site has a very high percentage of street frontage relative to its lot area. It's encumbered by the subway tunnel of the twenty-eight properties with subway frontage on Sixth Avenue between Canal Street and Reed Street. Only one other property has a lower ratio of lot area to subway frontage than this property, and that property does not satisfy minimum lot size requirements. These site conditions are also exacerbated by the regulations applicable in the C-62A zoning district, which both limit the lot coverage and require a minimum street wall. The proposed development would be masked as two separate triangular buildings with a total floor area of 24,854 square feet, 6.02 FAR, with ground-floor retail and residential use above. The southern portion would consist of six stories and a cellar. The northern portion would consist of eight stories plus cellar. The requested waivers are to lot coverage, side yard, front setback, and street wall regulations. With respect to lot coverage, the property consists of both corner lot and interior lot portions, so that the adjusted lot coverage requirement is seventy-eight, or maximum is seventy-eight point eight percent. The proposed building has a lot coverage of eighty-nine percent. This waiver helps to maximize the floor plates and building efficiency on this very constrained site, and also keeps the mass of the building from being pushed higher so that the development is more contextual to the historic district. With respect to height and setback, the proposed development would comply with the applicable height limit of a hundred and twenty feet, but the eighth floor of the northern building would encroach into the required ten-foot setback area. This is a relatively modest waiver that increases the floor plate and efficiency on the eighth floor. With, regarding the side yard, the zoning resolution provides that no side yards are required, but if a side yard is provided, it must be at least eight feet wide. There's an existing alleyway along the side lot line that's five feet, five inches wide, and is at a lower elevation than the rest of the property. So, in order to respect this historic condition and match the adjacent building wall to the west, the proposed development is set back five feet, five inches from the side lot line, which is less than the eight feet required.
Before you go on...
Yes?
Can you just talk about that five-foot alley? Why is it lower? Why do you have to preserve it historically? What, what is that?
Well, the, the property itself has been used as a parking lot since around 1949. It was reused as a result of the street wi, the street mapping, and the buildings that were on these two portions, the two former lots, were demolished, and it was since been used as a parking lot. The, uh, the, this is an existing alleyway that's, that's down at a lower level. It matches the condition on the adjacent properties. It was never effectively used or incorporated into the parking lot that was on that site.
No, what I don't understand is, isn't that five foot on your property?
Yes.
So, then why do you have to maintain it in a depressed state?
Basically, in an attempt to keep our lot coverage down, we wanted to maintain some open area on the property. This was a natural place to maintain it because it allows, it preserves the historic condition. It allows some light and air into the adjacent properties, and it's also, this is the deepest portion of the lot, so it has the least impact on the required street wall as opposed to locating, locating any open area, for example, on the northern triangle.
So, to cut to the chase, you're pulling away that wall because there are windows facing your, the side of your building on the other property. Is that it? I'm just trying to understand what's really going on.
No.
Because if you're coming here for a lot coverage waiver, why wouldn't you fill the lot? So, there's something about this five-foot strip that you don't want to fill. Why, is there an easement, an egress easement, a light and air that you're providing to the neighbor? Like, what's happening here?
Yeah, there is no easement. There is a piece of mechanical equipment, or HVAC equipment, I believe, that is, has, that belongs to 102 Franklin Street, an adjacent property that was installed back there and which is continued, continues to be used and which...
Wait, 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 on your property?
Yes.
That you gave them an easement to maintain there?
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
Because, you know, arguably, you wouldn't suffer as much of a difficulty if you were building a larger floor plate. So, you're, for some reason not understandable, intentionally building a smaller floor plate. And if you told me that there's a historical egress route through there, I'd get it better. Or that you spoke to the neighbors and you're maintaining some distance from their windows, I'd get it better. But right now, I don't get it.
Yeah. Perhaps the architect of the building, Peter Guthrie, can explain some more, but...
Yeah, that would be great. Maybe...
But it does, in fact, help us make both our C finding and our E finding, I believe, because it is a gesture to the adjacent buildings, and it also reduces, as I say, the lot coverage and street wall waivers that are required.
How tall is that rear portion? It's this five-story building in the front, but in the back, is it, is it still a five? I mean, it has a, a wall line adjacent to the alleyway.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
The building on Franklin is a five-story building, but to the rear, is that a lower portion adjacent to the alley?
I believe that's a one-story portion adjacent to the alley.
So, you're talking about how that, equipment on a one-story portion?
Uh, no, the equipment is actually located on the other side of the red property line.
But on the other side of the red property line isn't your property.
I don't...
Use your finger, because that's very in. So, you're, so it's on your side of the property?
Yes.
But, I mean, if you didn't want it to be on your property, you could say to the neighbor, "That's been fun, but you need to move it on your property." So, there's something more to the story where I kind of understand.
Isn't there a small rear yard there? Between your property and the Franklin building, there's a small rear, rear yard.
It's an alleyway, yes.
No, no, no. Besides the alleyway, there's a small rear yard, a couple of feet wide.
Of the neighbor.
Yes.
Neighbor has a rear yard of its very own.
A couple of feet, like, two or three feet.
Some dimension, yes.
Why can't they put their equipment in there?
But it looks like you're using this alleyway for egress. You're coming out of that, your first level.
Maybe we should have the architect address this, because actually, it's one of those classic things where the lawyer can't...
Because you have no way of getting out of the alleyway.
Peter Guthrie, DDG.
Why don't you take the microphone to the boards? I think it'll be a little better. I don't, Madam Chair, do you mind?
Sure.
And use your finger as opposed to that silly laser thing.
Sure. Backing up for two seconds, how did we get here? It came from the, the conundrum in the building code that asks for a continuous street wall and, and, and a lot coverage requirement. We found in our, in our initial plans that we couldn't satisfy those two things at the same time, and we were going through the landmark process, and as we were presenting to landmarks, we were also engaged with discussions with the neighbors, those that we could talk to. We certainly knew that there was opposition to covering lot line windows and that there's a great sensitivity to light and air. So, as we were developing the plans, we could easily come to the, to, to the end of the lot, enclose that stair, as you suggested, and make a building that comes into that portion and it, into that lower area. What we developed through the, through the architecture was a system of jack arches, which was a contextual connection, literally on the block and, and a few buildings, that helped us weave the two buildings together and satisfy what, or get us as close as possible to satisfying the street wall requirement. At the same time, we thought it was a decent move to keep the light and air for the residents. This shows you what, you were suggesting that we were leaving light and air for the rear of 102 Franklin Street and, and, and further down the block. The architectural conundrum here is that the spirit of the law is to make an urbanistic street wall, continuous street wall. Why? Because you don't want an opening at the end of the block. Why? Because you want that continuity.
That continuity typically exists when there's a rectangular lot, or it's easier to satisfy. When the extension of Avenue Americas in the 30s was made, it created a unique situation, a unique condition. That condition does exist elsewhere in the city, and it creates a really difficult little spot here, where there's an infinitesimal point that touches. And, you know, we certainly, we looked at a number of options, and the complying set that we've provided you today is one of the alternate plans and buildings, and it does come to that lot line. Why isn't a piece of mechanical equipment moved over? We're in discussions about moving it over.
Is that a whole building around a piece of mechanical equipment?
Well, that foundation is really great. We're happy to consider and looking at moving the building back. We don't think it's the best architecturally. It does preserve a fair amount of openness, and stays-
Sorry, you're saying it's not the best architecturally, because it shortens your jack arch? Is that what you're saying?
No, it provides more light and air to the neighbors.
To the neighbors. So you have windows that are facing there, and this is ultimately in deference to-
It also gives us a little bit more privacy. So, you know, if we put windows right up against the lot line, there's far less distance between our neighbors in the back and us, and so we have bedrooms on this side, and it would be better, we'd have greater marketability staying a little further away and keeping a little bit of privacy.
So you don't have any windows facing onto that alley, anyway?
We do. I'm sorry, but we may not have accurately communicated that.
You've also got an exit into that alleyway.
We do.
And cellar.
Yes.
So that's your means of egress out of your accessory fitness use space, right?
That's correct.
So without that, you'd have to force them to get back up the stairs somehow.
That's correct.
So you do need to move that piece of equipment, because otherwise, your means of egress is blocked.
That's correct.
Right? Okay, so that's definitely got to go.
That's correct.
If you're using it as your legal means. Okay, I see what you're saying. Otherwise, it has to go through the commercial space. Yeah. Okay. Okay, kind of weird, but okay.
Totally weird. I'm with you.
It's a weird site.
Go ahead. Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to the street wall waiver, as Peter mentioned, there's a series of jack arches there in front of that side yard waiver that we think we believe both maintains the street wall, and, which has been found by the Landmarks Commission to, quote, "restore the continuity of the street wall and anchor the end of the block fronting three streets, thereby strengthening the streetscape around this prominent site."
Does that require a waiver, or does DOB consider those arches to be a continuation of the street wall?
We believe that with those, with the openings-
We're not sure. Sorry, the short answer is not sure.
In the old days, yes, but in the new days, you don't know.
Well, it's a gray area, but there are architectural projections, and we think that it's possible, but we want it to be absolutely sure.
So there are openings in the street wall there, and we've requested BSA waiver for that as a result. The proposed development with these requested waivers would be a more efficient building than would a building that complies with the applicable zoning regulations. It would have larger and more usable floor plates, lower construction costs, and a higher sales and rental value on a per-square-foot basis. In conclusion, on this extremely unique site, the architects have come up with a unique solution that minimizes the requested variances, has been found to be appropriate by the Landmarks Commission, and we believe is the only minimum variance scheme that provides a reasonable return. To respond quickly to a couple of the questions that were raised at review session yesterday regarding our facade costs, we are not claiming that the Landmarks' quality facade is a hardship cost. What we are saying is that the excessive amount of street frontage relative to the lot area is a unique condition, and that the resulting increase in front facade is a uniqueness cost. The cost of that increase is based on a Landmarks' quality facade, which is required to be provided.
So then you have to take out from the papers any mention that the Landmarks' facade is an additional hardship?
Yeah, okay. We will do so. Regarding our complying building?
Well, you skipped the first one about the proof on your unique condition. So you just state in the statement that this property is unique in form in relation to the subway tunnel, but you don't provide any backup. And there is something in the financials, which sometimes they attach stuff, and I don't know how they use it in this case, but that, either if you're relying on that, there's no map, there's no nothing that shows all of those sites, you really need an analysis. I mean, it's true, I've never seen a bowtie-shaped lot before, but you have to show that that's not the most standard thing along Sixth Avenue in the world, right?
Yes, I believe we have a map and list of those adjacent properties attached to our economic analysis.
That's not where it belongs. It belongs next to your statement of facts, and then you respond to it and refer to it, so that we can follow along in your argument.
Okay.
Okay.
And Nadal Abi Saab from RA Consultants is here, and he can discuss the below-grade and subway issues on this site. Regarding our complying building, we agree that it's very difficult to come up with a complying building scheme on this property. The complying building does comply with the street wall regulations, because it is permissible to have a break in the street wall for a complying outer court, as strange as it looks. And in this case, the court has a width of at least 30 feet and a depth that is no greater than its width. So this is a complying street wall.
Okay. And then you have this in the submission, this totally floating around the pages drawing that shows another way of approaching that, and you didn't explain why you submitted it. All we could do is guess. That's not helpful for us to guess.
Yes. So this was actually submitted in response to the board's notice of comments, which asked the question, "What would happen if we relocated the open area on the lot from the side lot line to the northern corner?"
Okay, and so what would happen?
Well, this is a site plan showing that scheme, and as you can see, this has the same amount of open area on the northern corner as was taken away from the side lot line, and the result is an open area of 38 feet along Avenue The Americas, which would require a more substantial waiver from the street wall regulations, and which we believe would not be approvable by the Landmarks Commission, because it would not maintain the street wall and would not be as contextual.
Okay. So how would we know that? You'd have to tell us, right? You have to write it?
Yes.
Okay, so please do that. But the other thing is, you know, it looks like you'd get a more viable unit like that, right, in terms of your as-of-right. So there should be something to discuss that the unit layout, because the unit layout with your exterior, your outer court, is silly, right? I mean, really, would somebody actually? And that's something in the financials that really should be addressed, too. Is that really a marketable unit, that one with the outer court? Versus this one, which is arguably a more marketable unit, but there's some reason why, which you need to go into with Mr. Freeman, if that's who did your financial, about why that's still not a viable product, project, okay?
Yes.
Because arguably, it's a lesser variant, or it's a different variance, or it's an equivalently lesser variance, or something like that, right?
Yes.
Because if that's all you needed waived, and you otherwise had a totally viable project, maybe that's the one you go with, for example, right? Okay.
So Peter Guthrie will describe the proposed building and complying building in more detail. Jack Freeman is here to address questions about the economic analysis, and as I mentioned, Mr. Abi Saab will address questions about the below-grade conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter Guthrie, DDG. I'll be brief. We've talked about the side yard, the complying building, we've just touched on, so again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. The floor plate-
But you're the developer, right?
I'm the architect.
Oh, you're the architect, sorry.
Also, also with the developer, also with the builder. We do it all.
Oh, this is a design-build? That's cool. Okay.
We design, build, develop, manage.
Yes, okay. But so you don't have additional information about the story behind that weird side space? Basically, what we learned is that's it, right? Okay.
I believe so.
Okay.
The complying building, we just touched on the floor plate. We've done our best to make it as believable and as complying a building as we can. We do actually love courtyards, and generally speaking, if there was a much larger floor plate, it would support this dimension of inner, in this case, outer courtyard. We do think that, and we'll have to provide written testimony to this effect, that it does violate the spirit of the street wall, and landmarks will have a tough time with it. Other than that, the setback that was required in addition to the economic hardship presented by losing that floor area, it was also initiated during the landmark process, and we were asked to not set back specifically at that floor, to maintain more continuity at the street. And I think in terms of all the waivers, that's about it. I think that's all I need to talk about.
Okay.
Unless you guys have any questions.
Okay, so my only question is for the complying project. It's not clear about the outer court complying with the street wall regs, so if you could-
We'll provide more information.
Yeah, a note about that. Okay.
I did want to say one other thing per your comments. Yesterday, we will look at the stacking plans from complying to proposed. There was a note that we should get apples to apples and have the bedroom mix looked at. We will do that.
Okay, great. And also, because you actually prepared, did you yourself prepare the construction cost estimate, or somebody in your office?
We did, and we're reevaluating that move.
You're going to need to have an outside consultant do it, because you're talking to yourself.
We recognize that. Makes sense. Apologize for, it's our first time.
Any other questions?
Well, just, you gave us that little schematic of moving the outer court to the edge towards White Street. That would give you complying lot coverage? Or why not?
Same coverage as our proposed building, this particular diagram.
Mm-hmm.
So you could make another plan that would be further, we'd have to push further back.
And that's getting rid of the side yard?
Correct.
This one? And it's the same exact as your proposal?
In terms of floor area?
No, lot coverage.
In terms of lot coverage?
It says 89% somewhere.
I know, that's why I thought that maybe it was just an error, because it's hard to understand how that's exactly the same as your proposal.
Fair enough. Maybe we could clarify that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I guess Mr. Freeman is our next.
Turn it over to Jack Freeman.
I'm Jack Freeman. I'm here on behalf of both the applicant and Robert B. Pauls, that did the economic analysis. Unfortunately, Barbara Cohen had a personal emergency that she had to deal with, so she couldn't be here. I did work on behalf of the applicant with Barbara, so I'm familiar with the project. I can answer some of the questions, and we'll let you know where I can't. I think one of the questions was, sites used for comps were not in the same geographic area. So we'll review the comps, and I'll go over that with Barbara, and we will either make adjustments, or changes, or modifications, or explain why we use those comps. Discount factors applied to the comps, I think, were questions. One was related to a size discount for a 23,000-square-foot property as compared to the subject property, and I'll address that in writing. I mean, often, just as a sidebar, there are more people who can buy smaller lots at a higher price than people in the market to buy larger lots at a lower price. So size itself is not necessarily the only factor that is taken into account. There was a question about a location discount that was applied to an Elizabeth Street property. We'll take a look at that and either explain it better or make other adjustments. There was some question about the similarity of units in the apartment comparables in terms of both size and type.
Jump back to the site value, because there was one more site value question?
Sure.
Which was about Elizabeth Street, which actually had a four-story building on it, and still seems to have a four-story building on it that's a viable garage.
I was going to get to that.
Oh, okay, I thought you were finished with site value, and went on to the order of the question.
I was going to, I'm not necessarily in the order of the comments. So there was a question related to using similar units in terms of size and type as compared to the units that are in the subject property. So we'll take a look at those. And I think the architect mentioned that he's going to review the architectural characteristics of the stacking plan, so that will try to coordinate that with what he comes up with. There was a question of whether or not the impact of the strange layout, size, and shape on sales value, and I think the chair asked for perhaps a bigger discount factor for the weird shape of these, and we'll take a look at that and reply as well.
And especially for the as-of-right, because if that's your floor, I don't know.
Well, the as-of-right is very weird. But we now have, as I understand it, there's an alternative complying that you want us to consider as well, so that would be another alternative that we would look at, and we have to get some plans for that as well. The question related to whether the as-of-right and the proposed unit mixes should be similar in order to compare them with comparables, we'll do that, and I understand that question. And then the question about, let's see, two pages. You wanted us to clarify what the discount factors related to size and outdoor shape would be, particularly bonuses for size and outdoor space. Those are adjustment factors, duplexes as well. We'll look at that. How the stacking diagram relates to sales value, as the architect indicated, he's going to review the stacking plan, so we might make an adjustment to that. And you asked to remove side comps that have structures on them, so we'll take a look at those comps. And there was a particular question about one property, in fact, had a small building that was demolished and was treated as vacant lot, but the other property had an existing building that you indicated remained, so we'll take a look at that as well.
Seems to remain. I mean, I haven't been out there to check it out, but it's on the assessment roll that just came out, and I don't know whether it's being there.
We'll take a look at that. And I think that was all the questions that were asked, and I'll go over these with Barbara.
The only other one, and I'm not, it's really more about the cost estimates, but because of the way the submission was a little scattered, so we have 2.185 million for foundations, tunnel monitoring, acoustic design, tunnel-related things, and then there was something just kind of floating around without explanation for 1.258 million, which was the elevator sheer wall core of the facade. And it wasn't sort of brought together in discussion. It was just like, here's a piece of paper, do with it what you will.
Okay, well, I think, was indicated that there'll be an independent cost estimator, so he's going to have to review everything that was done, and he'll be able to perhaps be a little bit more specific about how the delta was determined between premium costs and other costs. So I will look over her shoulder as well.
Okay.
Or her shoulder. We haven't picked her ear.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Freeman? Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Power, you want to? Who's this?
This is our below-grade consultant.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Nadal Abi Saab with RA Consultants. We did the geotechnical investigation at the site, as well as the supportive excavation, and we are dealing with the transit authority. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the piles or anything related to underground.
Could you give us a pile layout with the foundation?
Do we have a plan that shows the foundation? We can present that plan.
I actually thought the costs were pretty well-defined, in terms of, you know, quantities and unit costs.
The actual cost of the site, I can elaborate a little bit about why these costs are specific to this particular site. There are two hardships in general. One is proximity to the transit authority. This site is right next to the tunnel. It so happens that the transit authority turns from church to Sixth Avenue right next to the site, and it touches the property line at two locations. So given the proximity to the tunnel, as we've heard in the previous presentation, the transit authority pretty much drives the foundation design into caissons, to isolate the building from the proposed structure. So that in itself is a hardship, but add to it the odd shape of the site, there are no- no pile rigs that can fit in a triangular-shaped site like this. So all of the pile work and any foundation work has to be done from street level prior to any excavation. So on a typical site with piles, we would, for example, excavate to the level of the subgrade, go ahead with the pile installation, and start the foundation construction. And on this particular site, everything, all the piles, every single one of them, is about sixteen to twenty feet longer than it should be, just because you can't fit a rig to work in the odd-shaped site. In addition to that, the transit authority requires us to put piles that are capable to carry any lateral loads on the building without shedding an ounce to the structure. So if there was no transit authority, to begin with, we wouldn't need piles for this site, we have natural materials. But even if we did need piles, they wouldn't need to be this beefed up in terms of steel because they wouldn't have to completely isolate the tunnel. So all of these factors added, the result is an increase in cost to construction.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Just one other comment to Mr. Power. Just that you're aware that we have a letter from January 13 from the DEP about the RAP and the CHASP, and there were comments, right? Did you, just to make sure you got that?
Yes, and we responded, and we're waiting for their response to our letter on air quality and noise.
Great, thanks. So I think, any other questions for the, so I think we can move to the speakers. Yes? Yes. So if there's kind of organized, there's opposition versus those in favor, if the people who are in opposition could speak first. And please come to the ramp so that you'll be ready when the next person comes. Everyone gets three minutes. When the timer goes off, you have ten seconds to wrap up, so please observe that. Thanks.
I don't think, you're not giving three minutes now, right?
Oh, there's organized, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was organized.
I'm going to try to take only three minutes, though. The hour's late, and I think what we need to say is better said in writing. Howard Weiss, Davidoff, Huxer, and Citron, we represent 119 White Street Corporation, which is the owner of Seventeen Franklin Street, Lot 25, that joins this property. It's the subject of the application, that joins the property that's Westerly Lot Line. I've been practicing before this board for 28 years. This is only the fifth time in 28 years that I've ever come up before the board in opposition to an application. We take it, we don't take it lightly to appear in opposition, but for the reasons I'm going to set forth, we really did feel that this was an appropriate case where the community deserved representation in terms of the concerns that they have regarding the application. Before I start, though, I'd like to solve a piece of a puzzle that seemed to be outstanding, which is the mysterious HVAC system. Something that you weren't told, but it is in a footnote in the Statement of Facts and Findings, is that there's presently a pending lawsuit that in fact involves this HVAC system and an additional part of the property wherein the owner of 102 Franklin Street claims the right of ownership to that property that's part of this zoning lot by adverse possession. And we'll furnish the board with a copy of that complaint.
So, I'm sorry, so just to understand, so that person who's claiming that portion of the property, that's his mechanical system for his or hers, and won't remove it because that person claims that it's on his own property?
Right.
Correct, okay. Now we got it. Now we understand. You could've mentioned that, it would've cleared it up really fast, instead of us having to guess around like this. Okay.
Having given you that piece of the puzzle, let me continue. We think that there's no question, this site presents challenges with respect to its development. The question is, how do those challenges fit in with 7221A and B? And although, for example, this is a small lot, the reality is it uniquely small because that's what 7221A requires. And what we found by looking just within the 400-foot radius of this site, is that 72% of the lots within the 400-foot radius, 68 are smaller than this lot? The question of the adjacency to this subway tunnel is something that's common along Sixth Avenue. And of course, the board's already pointed out that its location within the Tribeca Historic District is something that has no bearing on uniqueness. So although, again, there are some issues with the site configuration, are they unique? Or are they found more generally? And I understand that they don't have to be singularly unique, but they can't be so common as to cry out for the City Planning Commission and the City Council to consider, well, maybe we ought to be amending the zoning to grand relief. And we don't believe it belongs here at the board for this reason. We think that there are some serious issues with respect to the beef finding and the Pauls report. The board actually has touched on some of them. But I, and we've actually retained the Leitner Group, which is a real estate appraisal and consulting group, and they've done a detailed study, but from what I've heard today, Pauls, with the help of Mr. Freeman, is gonna be going back to the drawing board, and what we'd like to do is have an opportunity to see what they resubmit to the board, and then we'll submit to you a full and detailed response to the further work that's being done. As to neighborhood character, there are other people here, people from the community, people who are adjacent, the Tribeca Trust, who can speak to that. In fact, Parsifany Tan, who works for council member, Chin was here to speak on behalf of the council member. She left her statement with me that I'll hand up, that basically expresses some of the concerns that have been articulated by the community that you will hear regarding neighborhood character.
Thank you.
And the last thing I want to say on that issue is, I understand that the Landmarks Commission granted a certificate of appropriateness. I was there, we were part of that process. But as we all understand, whether or not this project may be appropriate under the Landmarks law in the context of the historic district, and the fabric and fiber of the historic district with respect to typology and architectural expression of the building is very different from whether or not it meets the C finding with respect to, for example, the character of the neighborhood that's much broader, I think. Certainly, the extent to which this development will impair the use and enjoyment of adjoining property and in fact be detrimental to the health and welfare of the public generally. So with that, I'm going to actually step back, turn this over to the others who wish to speak, and hopefully we can work out an appropriate schedule so we can receive the updated information, we can make a submission, and we can all go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm David Schoonmaker. I live at Seventeen White Street. Sorry, I'm gonna read off my iPhone. As some of you may already know, variances are approved where it's alleged there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship. In these specific cases, the board then may grant a variance which must meet specific requirements. And I repeat, a variance. There's a lot of variances being requested here for these unique spaces. Two phrases I'd like to highlight are practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships. And why I'd like to focus on those is because DDG made an impractical decision, in my opinion, by grossly overpaying for two small pizza-shaped parking lots, and DDG clearly knows that there would be absolute hardships. For instance, the connection of the buildings, which will block light, air, and ventilation, is nothing about the need or request for continuity of this building, but more about saving money. Because by doing that small ridiculous connection that will block light, air, and ventilation for all of those homes behind and all those windows behind Franklin and White Street, it's simply so they put HVAC and AC equipment all on the north building. They don't have to do it now on both or two separate buildings. Those pizza-sized lots would be more appropriate for small townhouses, something more simplistic. It's all about financial gain here. DDG is using their financial and legal clout to take advantage of a system they assumed would side with the big boys. To compare, I'm the little guy. I dealt with approvals for a roof renovation after purchasing my adjacent loft next door. I abided by the guidelines. I was building a new bulkhead that went back and forth three times, probably spent $10,000 to $15,000 of my own money. I couldn't ask for any variances, so why should DDG get to ask for so many variances and make significant profit? Item C on the variance approval document informs that variances will not substantially impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent property and will not be detrimental to public welfare. Well, the DDG-requested variance would significantly damage my adjacent personal property and rooftop, and would absolutely be detrimental to me, my lifestyle, my home investments. Natural light and air would be reduced, and decibels from multiple air conditioning units directly adjacent to my private roof space would make a Newark International Airport runway a quieter place for me to live down the road. In addition, the blocking of the natural light, air, and ventilation in the back alley, again, will be detrimental to all homes. And I encourage you, take a walk by the area. There's tons of light, there's a lot of natural light. And I'd love to see a beautiful rendering from your team that actually maybe shows what that light's going to look like when that building goes up, because I haven't seen that yet, and that beautiful tree will certainly be gone. Let's face the facts, even the rejection of these variances will still permit DDG to make huge profit instead of extraordinary profit with these variances. So why do they need the variances? Now, I'm not opposed to something eventually being built, but stick with the historic landmark district rules. Stick with the fabric of our historic environment. Don't block and dwarf our current historic mansard roof and our alley, and don't remove those beautiful trees, and don't request these variances. I've lived on White Street for 12 years now and believe that my voice should be heard louder than DDG's, whose CEO happens to live on Bond Street in the East Village. Tribeca's more meaningful to me, my neighbors, and yes, DDG may tout that they have an office in Tribeca, but commercial space really isn't that crazy in Tribeca. Go to Soho, they'll probably pay three times more. So bottom line, I think DDG has a lot to prove before I'm sold that they love Tribeca too, and they're doing this to help the neighborhood. They're simply doing this and asking for variances to help themselves for financial gain, not the neighborhood. So I encourage you all to unanimously reject these variances, don't get taken advantage of, and do your service as a member of the BSA. Ask DDG to come back with another idea requiring no variances. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Jamie Gordon, a resident of Seventeen White Street. I just want to point out that just 500 yards away from this lot, there's another lot at the corner of Franklin and Varick. It's 137 Franklin, that received no variances, requested numerous variances, received none of them, and yet still were able to build a very profitable building. So it's just an interesting counterpoint to what we're seeing going on here. And again, it seems that they just don't need the variances in order to still build a profitable building. There's proof down the block. That's it.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, thanks for listening to us. I'm Eileen Birmingham, and I've lived in Tribeca for 20 years and at Seventeen White Street for seven. And I'm first speaking on behalf of Lynn Ellsworth, who is the founder and chairman of the Tribeca Trust, because she was waiting for a couple hours and had to leave. So first I'll be Lynn, and then I'll be me, and then I will be Noel, who is also patiently waiting. And I'll make it fast. I'm Lynn Ellsworth, speaking for Tribeca Trust, a civic organization of residents in Tribeca. We asked the BSA to reject the variances for 98-100 Franklin Street. We believe that granting them would result in a building that would damage the character of the neighborhood. How so? The bulk and height on such a small site, the void ratios, the entrance locations, the fenestration patterns, and the glass loggia are all without precedent in the neighborhood. It would impose a loss of integrity to the cultural asset that is the Tribeca East Historic District. In addition, the destruction of the large canopy tree and enclosure of the rear yard and the removal of it as a long-enjoyed viewpoint into the 19th century constitutes a taking of the public common for private gain. So that was Lynn at Tribeca Trust. And then Noel Farasi has been sitting here. She owns 104 Franklin since 1978, and it's a commercial building that she rents out, mixed-use, so residential and commercial, but primarily her income is from renting out the loft space, which would sadly be rendered as dungeons if that large brick wall was allowed to block off the entire alleyway. So not only would it reduce her rental income that she's enjoyed since 1978, it would probably ultimately reduce the eventual sales price of her building because she has all these gorgeous back windows that would just be totally blocked off. Not to mention, she would lose ventilation and egress. And I'm in a similar camp where I'm on the third floor at Seventeen White Street, and my only egress in the back, if there were a fire, would be blocked by their commercial space. And I doubt the commercial space is gonna be open 24/7 for me and my two children if there's a fire. So I think they have to rethink the egress situation for the neighbors, and I don't think it's appropriate that two entire blocks of Franklin and White should lose all their light and ventilation.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Prudence Carlson, and I also live at Seventeen White Street. Zoning laws are devised with care to protect, enhance, benefit, and safeguard neighborhoods and the greatest common good. They should not be lightly overturned or waived for the benefit of a handful of interested, privileged, speculator developers. The 100 Franklin Street lot has been said is a landmark lot, and I know this is not landmark, but to say that we have to have all of this volume because we're gonna be, the demand is for a curtain wall extending from Franklin to White Street is a specious argument because it simply adds tremendous bulk to a building. They could very readily pull back somewhere and create the space that they're mandated to have, and observe that 20/80, you know, percentage. Not only is this, it's a landmark lot, and therefore, when it was landmarked, it was understanding that whatever went up there was going to be, need to be contextual, and need to be contextual not only in terms of its aesthetic, but also in terms of its scale. And on top of it being landmarked, it has this very, very, very unique inlet through that yard, which is more than an alleyway, if you go and observe, onto the historic landscape of those late 19th-century buildings that allows light, air, and a vision of what Tribeca's past is, what that past was, and what it could potentially remain. These developers purchased this lot within the last 18 months, and they purchased it, my belief is, with the assumption that they would be out of hand granted the variances. And they went in and paid more than any other developer that we are aware of was willing to offer, and there were other developers who came before the owner and offered money. And they thought, we've got to shoo-in with BSA. That should not be granted or allowed. They are not building for the community, they are building for a group of partners and speculators who want to make as much money as possible. We ask you to really consider this with care and concern. This affects many, many, many lives. It affects also all the people who pass through that area, who work in that area. It is of enormous importance to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other speakers on this?
I am Alan Kirili. I am an artist, a sculptor, and I came in Tribeca in 1980. And I just would like to share with all of you the fact that we have a responsibility to protect the beauty of those streets. Those streets belongs to us, those streets belong to the future generation. And that sort of absurd collage of this building on this marvelous Seventeen White Street with the mansard at the sommet, at the top there, you have that mansard, it's one of the very unique elements of architecture in Tribeca, in those cast-iron buildings, that many people in the world come to New York to see. There is 56 million tourists that come to New York, and many love Tribeca and see those buildings. I think we have boots, we have a responsibility to protect the context. It's time to stop the frenetic speculation. And as an artist, I can write it, I can publish it, but I am convinced of my responsibility to come to say those few words to you. Stop this absurd collage building on those jewel that come from the 19th century, very often inspired by Italian architecture, from Ferrara, from Siena, from Venice. And how can we not protect this great moment of architecture in New York? And I just ask you please to be a little bit on the side of the protection of our common patrimony. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers? Okay. Mr. Power, you too.
Thank you. I would just like to respond to one point made by Mr. Weiss, which is, this building was not designed... was not designed in response to that lawsuit, the building was designed in 2013. Landmarks approval was obtained in January 2014, the lawsuit was filed in June 2014.
Okay, but just to, just to be realistic here, so, because I understand an architect has to actually start to design something, and he has to know what he's going to do, right? So if he's told that, look, there's this disputed territory and it could go either way, then that would make sense that he would say, okay, my property line is effectively where you put the building as opposed to where the mechanical stuff is. So that's what I want to know. Are you assuming, and let's say, are you just kind of playing it safe, therefore you put the building wall there, and if it can go either way, whoever wins, because maybe you just don't know, maybe there's a reasonable case for adverse possession, I have no idea, it's not relevant here, I just want to know, has the zoning lot, in terms of your measurement, been calculated based on your actual wall and your lot coverage, the actual wall location, or has it been calculated based on that five-foot back because you're still assuming that's yours? That's what I just want to know.
The zoning lot is based on the historic tax lot, which is based on the ownership as it's existed.
Okay.
In chain of titles since then.
Architect agrees, that's true, yes? Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments, anything? Okay.
I'll just add one little.
No, I'm sorry, the, did you already speak?
No.
No, okay, I'm sorry. Help quickly. Let's teach a name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Mel Bachner.
Oh, you're on the list.
I've lived in Tribeca since 1968, so I've watched the entire change that's happened, and now the changes that are projected by this building. I think everyone who spoke before me spoke very eloquently and made the case better than I can make it. What stood out for me for this presentation was really the sketchiness of the architect's presentation. The fact that so much of this is just very loose and very floating around and not nailed down and unclear, and those renderings are really, really duplicitous. On the top of the building, he has these transparent, what are they? Well, they're bulkheads. They're not going to be transparent, they're going to be black, they're going to be solid, they're going to be much higher than anything else in the neighborhood. And we have to be honest, whether Landmarks approved that thing or not, it is really ugly. It looks more like a prison wall, and has no business in that neighborhood. Now, we've already been trampled by that Herzog and Murren building on the corner of Leonard Street, which is really a travesty. This just adds insult to injury. And I think that the case has been made, and if you do grant these variances, people are going to believe that a fix was in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Power? So there are, we went through a lot of different things, but you have the list, because otherwise it'll take a long time to go through them again.
Yes, yes, we've been listening, yes.
Okay, so I think, so you need time to put this together, and then opposition needs time to respond, and you can respond to them if you choose to.
Yes.
Okay, so what are we talking about? Could you, would you be able to submit materials by March 3?
Uh, no.
No. March 18?
Actually, so our main financial consultant is not available today, so we can't.
Can't really object, so where would you pick something?
Yeah, let's say March 10.
March 10, okay. Submission on the 10.
Yes.
Opposition has a, the 24th to submit? It's standard to get two weeks. It's standard to get two weeks. So you submit on the 10, opposition on the 24th. Do you want time to submit, to respond to opposition?
No, I don't think so.
So then a hearing on the 31st of March? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This concludes the public hearing of the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals for February 10, 2015.
Thank you.